Have clapping, or cheering, or any kind of calling out. We need to be respectful and listen to each and every person as they make their voices heard. I would also reiterate that this is a proposed budget for 2013, which is why we are continuing to have public hearings. This is our third public hearing, and our official one as a part of the Board of, as a meeting of the Board of Legislators. So I am going to thank you, everybody. You can put your signs down now. If we could have Ryan Grafman and Christine Holden with Stephen come to the podium first, please. The podium is off to my right, your left, and just pull the microphone down to yourself. Yes. Please introduce yourself and tell us where you live, and then we start the timer.
My name is Ryan Grafman. I'm 11 years old, and I live in White Plains. I've come to Cranberry Lake on many occasions. I've had some of my birthday parties there also. I had a great guy named Tara. Since then, whenever I go to Cranberry Lake, I hope that Tara will be my guy. He is a, he's great for many reasons. He is very intelligent and fun to be around. My friends and I all learned so much about nature and local history from Tara. He made it so fun, we didn't notice how much we were learning. I think that it is unfair that Tara should lose his job over something that is not in his control. Tara and all the county naturalists are just as much a treasure for us as the nature they help us appreciate and protect. I urge the county board to allow Tara and all the county naturalists to keep their full-time positions. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Ryan. Christine Holden, and while Christine is coming up, could we also have Lily Wang and the youth who are here from the Mount Vernon Youth Shelter, please? Yes.
My name is Stephen Holden. I am nine years old, and I think that people who work at Cranberry Lake Preserve should keep their jobs. My mom told me that the government of Westchester is thinking about not spending money on Cranberry Lake Preserve. I love Cranberry Lake Preserve, and because I love nature, and is full of nature habitats to plants and animals. I am worried that kids won't get educated enough about nature if you do not spend money on Cranberry Lake Preserve. Tara and Zachs work at Cranberry Lake Preserve, and they educate kids and help the preserve grow. I think they don't, I think if they don't work at Cranberry Lake Preserve, kids won't get educated, and I am very worried about that. Imagine kids not being educated about nature. The people who signed this petition love nature and Cranberry Lake, Cranberry Lake Preserve too. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen.
My son Stephen created a petition, and he got 246 signatures, both online and on a regular paper petition in support of his cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, leave the petitions with us, if you would. Do we have Lily Wang? Oh, and this is the Mount Vernon Youth Shelter.
Dear County Legislature, Lyndon Williams, and the Westchester County Board of Legislators, us young men would like to sincerely, sincerely thank you for your ongoing support of the Youth Empowerment Program during these difficult times.
Because you care about the youth shelter living in Mount Vernon, we are better people today. Living in the youth shelter and working for Mount Vernon Youth Bureau through a program you find, you fund, we are able to positively contribute back to our community by volunteering at the Warburg Nursing Home on a daily basis.
Because of your support, we are provided, because of your support, we are provided with opportunities for employment, which makes us understand and appreciate the values of money.
By you supporting the Mount Vernon Youth Bureau, we have gained positive youth development skills, attitudes, and values to enter college, the workforce, and other meaningful activities.
Again, thank you for restoring programs such as the youth, youth employment, which helps young men like us become, to become economic self-sufficient.
Thank you very much. Lily Wang?
I am proud to introduce Lily Wang, who is an honors student in violin at the Music Conservatory of Westchester, and she's going to demonstrate for you how county funding for the arts impacts thousands of young people each year.
I'm Lily. I'm 16, and I started playing violin in the third grade.
Could we please have come up to the podium? I'm gonna have five, I'll do it five by five. Bruce Yablon, Carol Morris, Judith Watson, Vicki Simmons, and Mike Hagan.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for coming out and supporting the fine workers of this county and many of the causes that make this a better county. County legislators, thank you for taking a tremendous amount of time, as I know that it does take a lot, fighting over this budget, trying to work these things out, and do the work for us in the county. There's a lot of things in the budget I could probably spend an hour criticizing, but the one that glares out at me is the cuts once again to the probation department. These fine, well-trained, hard-working professionals save this county a tremendous amount of money, far more than they earn. It makes bad fiscal, social, and economic policy to fire these people. Each and every one of them, if those of you who, I've certainly never seen a million or $5 million, but if you want to know what it looks like, look at any one of these probation officers, and they're worth about $5 million of incarceration costs that we don't have to pay. It's very simple economics, my friends. If a person's in prison, it costs about $100,000 a year. If they're on probation, it's $2,000 to $3,000 a year. If a probation officer had a caseload of one, they would pay for their salaries, their benefits, and their pensions, and we'd still be in the green. But nobody has a load of one. They typically have 50 to 100 people. If you fire 15 more probation officers on top of the 18 that have already been cut, it's 1,500 domestic violence offenders, sex offenders, and criminals who are either unsupervised or back in prison. This does not make sense. Putting a person on probation gives them the chance to be in the community, working, being a mother, being a father, contributing, and transitioning back. The last thing we want to do is after a sentence handing a person, here's a bus ticket, and attaboy, and don't come back here again. This is what a community is about. It's not about saying, let's just throw away the key and create a situation where people come back over and over again. It is bad economic and social policy. It's like going to your mechanic, and he says, or she says, for $30, you have to get an oil change done today, or next week you're gonna change your engine for $3,000, and saying, I'm sorry, don't change the oil. This is a bad deal for the taxpayers, and it will cost, based on the basic economics of putting 1,500 people back in prison, it'll cost for every man, woman, and child in this county, over $150. For me, as a family of five, it's another $1,000 a year to put these people back in prison. Worse, to the one person who might get injured, or robbed, or raped by not having, sorry. By, that's okay. By not having them on, on probation, the price that you save is too high a cost. This is a bad decision, so please, keep these people employed. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Before we ask Carol Morris to come up, we'd like to ask David, who was not able to speak with the Mount Vernon Youth Shelter folks, so please, go ahead, David.
Hello. My name is David Rivera, and I am writing this letter to commend the staff at the Greenberg Health Center.
Oh, Greenberg Health, sorry.
I wish to have it publicly noted that the staff has continuously performed above and beyond any expectations of their job titles. They have always treated my family with concern, respect, and a conscious effort to best serve the needs of our family members. I have, I have also noted that they give the same attention to other patients as they do to us, and I feel that this should be acknowledged. In particular, the nurses of the Greenberg Health Center are always aware of special requirements that some children may need, and are sensitive and caring in treating these issues. As well as the doctors, it should be noted, they are also performing their duties in an empathetic manner, combined with a professionalism that comes both the child and the oftentimes worrying parents. Going to the doctor is often a frightening experience for a young child. To be able to bring a child to the Greenberg Health Center and not have this scenario speaks volumes about the quality of care given by the staff members of the Greenberg Health Center. In closing, I wish to say thank you to all the staff members. This includes the secretaries, the custodians, the medical technicians, and all the unseen members of the Greenberg Health Center, along with, of course, nurses, doctors, and administrators who strive to make the center the success it is. Again, thank you for all that you do, and please reinstate the funding to health, to the health center. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Carol Morris?
To the honorable, honorable members of the County Board of Legislators, thank you for this brief opportunity to speak. How much can I say in 180 seconds? It makes me very sad to come back one more time to this committee, to plead with you on behalf of the over 200,000 patients who made over 500,000 visits to our health centers last year alone, a number we expect to exceed this year. Many of these families also depend on the daycare subsidies, which allows them to hold a job. The county executive wants to save taxpayers' dollars. To do this, while supporting the use of tax dollars to support the golf clubs, for example, he has stripped the funding of our health centers, raised the cost of daycare beyond many families' ability to pay, stripped funding for family planning and contraceptives, refused funding for pediatric, the well-care visits, et cetera. The list goes on. We understand the county executive wants to save money. Save money? Just think about it. By cutting funding to health centers so that families either go without care for preventable illnesses, or go to emergency rooms when they are sick at 10 times the cost, does that save money? By cutting daycare funding so that a parent has to give up a job to stay home and seek public assistance, does that save money? By cutting family planning money and contraceptives so that young people have unprotected sex, which could result in pregnancy, HIV, STD, does that save money? Have you heard these smokescreens of the county executives? Smokescreens. The health centers don't need money, because everyone will have Obamacare for, to cover the uninsured. The truth is, Obamacare insurance begins in 2014. This is the 2013 budget. Smokescreen. The county department can provide services to our, their existing clinics. Truth, the health department clinics have limited hours and are not accessible to the majority of our patients. Can the health department really assume care for the patients we are unable to serve and save the county money by doing so? I think not, and so must you. The saddest thing of all is the county executive's budget mirrors the Republican platform so silently rejected in the recent 2012 elections. We are here tonight to ask that our funding be restored, and please, plan to override the county executive's inevitable, inevitable veto. He is one. We and our clients and supporters are many, many. On behalf of the families you are elected to serve, we thank you, and we promise to remember your support in your future plans to run for public office. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight, and I'd like to thank the Board of Legislators for indulging us in here tonight and giving us the opportunity to speak a little bit about what's happening. As our CEO, our esteemed CEO just said, we're asking that the $1.9 million be restored into the county executive budget. Now, she's sad, and I'm pissed. I served in the United States Army for three years, proudly served this country for three years.
Wow.
And I'm pissed off, because each and every year, we have to come here and beg the administration to restore our funding. Community health centers are vital in the world, not just in Westchester County. We are vital. The services that we provide are needed, and they're necessary, and everyone is entitled to those services. We shouldn't have to come here each year begging for the money to be restored. Now, you all need to send a message to our county executive, the way that America sent a message to Washington, that we are not gonna have this. Okay? This is the last year we're gonna do this. The money needs to be restored, and it needs to stay there. Just quickly, we had a, I had a patient who walked into my office about two weeks ago, someone I met at a gym a few years ago, and she walked into my office because she lost her private insurance, and there's a local group who takes really good care of you if you have insurance. She divorced her husband, he was the one who carried the insurance. She had no insurance after they divorced. She had a cardiac condition, her heart was functioning, or is functioning, at 20% capacity. They, they charged her $400 or $500 that she didn't have to pay for cardiac services at this private group. She walked out there in tears, but she remembered that she met me in a gym, and she came into the health center, and she cried, and she said, Judith, can you help me? And she explained, she explained her predicament. I called the CEO, she activated her troops, all of us, and got us together. We scheduled an appointment with a cardiologist, so this patient could be cared for. She was hospitalized, she was, she received a cardiac catheterization, which is a medical procedure that she needed, and she's recovering at home. And so she wanted to, she wanted me to say to you all tonight, please support the health centers, because I'd be dead if the health centers wasn't there. Okay? So please, and most of you support us, Lyndon, Alfred, most of you support the health centers, and we love you for that, and we appreciate that. We're just asking that you continue to support us, and this, we need to cut this out. It needs to be cut out. And I want to thank all of the staff of the Mount Vernon Neighborhood Health Center for coming out here tonight to support this.
Thank you, Judith. Vicki Simmons?
Second year that we have come before you under the threat of having our funds to the health centers cut. Again, the county executive says the funds are not necessary to our operation, and he says that this proposed budget continues to provide essential services and maintain a strong safety net for those in need. Well, please tell me what healthcare is if not an essential service? What we are, that strong safety net, that he pledged to maintain for those in need? And here we are again. All of you on the Board of Legislators know how crucial healthcare is. Cutting our funds again this year seems vindictive. The issues of previous years remain the same. We still have a high percentage of unemployed and underemployed residents with limited or no insurance. Our children, families, and elderly still need access to affordable healthcare, and our health centers are the only places offering affordable, quality healthcare. The only alternative to this is to overburden our hospital emergency rooms at exorbitant expenses that will ultimately fall back onto the county. This is penny wise and pound foolish. The proposed budget plans to lay off 126 county workers, because the anticipated healthcare cost is $120 million for 2013. That's expensive, isn't it? Where will those who are laid off and their families go for healthcare if you cut our funding? Our patients have come again and again to appeal to your humanity not to reduce and possibly eliminate some of their healthcare services. Last week, I read that the county is spending $3,000 each to purchase goose-naters to try to prevent geese droppings on the golf courses. Do you think that ranks up there with preventing the spread of sickness or disease, disease with preventive healthcare? The county executive says that he hopes the county board will approve a budget that protects our AAA rating by not raiding our reserve funds and preserve essential services for the people of Westchester. Well, doesn't that include us? Our tax dollars pay for your healthcare. Shouldn't some of it come back to us? This past election has shown us that the majority of the American people just want a level playing field. If we continue to be treated as second-class citizens every year, I urge every one of you to show your discontent at the ballot box and vote for those who vote for you. Thank you.
Thank you. As Mike Hagan is coming to the podium, could we have Opal Dunston, Carlos Hodgson, Sidney Curry, Marvina Downs, and Dr. Diana Morse also come up to the, to wait in line? Thank you.
I'd like to start by thanking all of the legislators for both publicly and privately taking the time out to listen to the concerns that we have had over the county executive's proposed budget. Their concerns that have serious consequences for our membership, which is why you've seen so many officers come out to these public hearings. I'd also like to take the time out to thank you for responding to those concerns by putting the money back in the budget that was, that was cut to the tune of $1 million. This $1 million wasn't belt tightening, it was a $1 million worth of resources, okay? In, in the form of five officers that lines weren't filled, in the form of not giving us the ability to hire officers as they retire next year, and by not giving us money to purchase vehicles in order to replace old and, and unserviceable vehicles, so that basically we can, you know, we can get to these emergencies safely. And that these past cuts that we've had over the last three years have eliminated 17 positions, they cut back on patrols, and they've redeployed our detectives away from their true assignments so that the county executive can claim savings in overtime. With that, what it's done is, it's given us no patrols in any county parks from the months of September to May, no patrols on any county bike path or trailway at any time during the year, and then during the summer season, reduced patrols. Last year alone, we lost two posts as a result of these cuts. Wilson Woods was one post that they just, you know, you'll have to call the police officer, and they'll have to respond from Glen Island, or, or the Hutch, or wherever the nearest car is. And, you know, what's going on is, it's, it's increasing our response times. We've had up to 30-minute response times to some jobs in some of the parks, and it's leaving us with one officer responsible for several parks. Many times, they're at capacity, there's thousands of people in each park, which park do we stay at? You know, we try to pick the one that looks like it's, it's gonna go off. That's basically what happens. And it happens. In the last three years, in the last two years, three times, we've had to call for mutual aid, because we couldn't control the crowd. So, you know, if we had the necessary manpower, we'd be able to control the crowd. So these resources are more than some numbers on a piece of paper. Having the necessary officers available to handle the workload and to maintain officer safety by providing backup is as necessary as the body armor and the weapons that we carry. All right? We choose a profession that puts us in harm's way, we understand the dangers, we accept them, we just ask the support of county government so that we have the resources necessary to do the job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Opal, Opal Dunston?
Thank you for the opportunity to listen to us tonight, but here we are again pleading. I'm here tonight on behalf of health centers and the thousands of patients served by health centers. I'm speaking about the patients without health insurance, and the underserved who would not be able to receive health services had it not been for community health services, community health centers, pardon. I'm speaking about a parent whose child is ill, no money, no health insurance, and a fear of going to the emergency room because of immigration status, but knows that she can come to the health center and she will receive the services that she needs. I'm thinking about grandma, whose diabetes medication is out, has, she has no money, what does she do? I need for you to think about that. Cutting funds to health centers is not reducing costs. What will happen to those thousands of patients who depend on health centers when they get ill? They will just end up in the emergency room or in the hospital. That is not cost savings. Emergency room care is more costly than the care provided at community health centers, and every dollar spent at a community health center comes back threefold. Health centers are what are vital to the healthcare system. We keep costs down, we prevent unnecessary emergency room and hospitalizations. Think about that. So I urge you to consider these facts and consider those thousands of people who use health centers, who are counting on you to preserve their safety net. Do not cut our funding, and don't let us down. Thank you.
Thank you. Carlos Hodgson?
Ladies and gentlemen, members of the Board of Legislature, I greet you all. My name is Marvin Downs. I am here advocating for the continuation of federal grants for the Mount Vernon Neighborhood Health Center. I worked for the health center for the past 20 years and over. As we all know, that the health centers are honored the leadership of Mrs. Carol Morris. Mrs. Morris has extended her arms of compassion to all patients and workers. As one of her workers, I am here asking your support to keep the health centers open. As one of her workers, I am here asking your support to keep the health centers open. The community that the health centers are in, these communities are poor, and we are the workers, need to continue to work at these facilities to care for our patients. There are poor people who need help, care, and support, and the health center doors need to be open so that no one will be turned away because they cannot afford healthcare. That is why I am here imploring to you, Rick, to reconsider your action in regards of cutting the federal grants within the health center. In my closing, I would like to quote from the Book of Psalms 41:1, "Blessed is he who considereth the poor; the Lord will deliver him in times of trouble." Thank you.
Thank you, Marvina. Reverend Sidney Curry?
Ladies and gentlemen, family, I could talk about this being the year 2012 and about us being the difference. But I realize when I'm standing over there that if this meeting were, I think, four months ago, I would not have been able to attend because I would not have been able to stand. Last year, I died three times because of three life-threatening illnesses, because of the treatments that I am receiving from Dr. Davis and the staff at our Greenberg Health I'm able to be here tonight. I have autoimmune, which means that my immune system attacks itself. And the doctors at Columbia told me that it can't be cured. So, it's not about how much time do I have? I'm sorry.
Take your time.
It's about what am I gonna do with the time that I have? I'm never out of pain. That's what this is about. And I feel ashamed that I have to wear them because didn't you know something's wrong with me? Because of Dr. Davis, I can't tell you how many times I've, I take a step and I forget what he called it, something happens and my muscles lose, and it's really scary. When I go to bed at night, I don't know if I'm gonna wake up. But you know what makes me, it's gonna sound crazy, but, what gives me joy is that I know that I got them behind me. I plead with you. Please, please, if you take away this money, I will be dead. We all wanna go to heaven. I've been there twice. I ain't ready to go. Please, without that money, I can't do all that numbers and all that science stuff, and I'm down to the bottom line. The blood test that they have to take, I'm also on aggressive chemotherapy, five hours a day, five days straight, once a month. I have what I believe to be the best doctor on the planet. Help me to live another day.
Dr. Diana Morse? Is Dr. Diana Morse here or Carlos Hodgson?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, good evening, Board members, yet again. It's getting too, we're getting to know each other a little too well, perhaps. I'm the Director of Radiology for the Mount Vernon Neighborhood Health Center Network. I've been with the center now for seven and a half years since August 2005. I am very proud to say that we started with a small sonogram section. We are doing, we have gone from two sites to four sites. We have doubled our volume, and I would say that we have tripled our quality with our new equipment and all of our continuing education. I'm very, very, very proud of what I do. And I'm here to tell you that neighborhood health centers work. They work for the people. They provide the continuity of care. These patients will not get lost in a hospital and be seen one place here and then another hospital there, and nobody knows who, what it's about. Mistakes happen that way. We provide the continuity of care. We provide top-quality care. We deserve to continue to do something that is really just such a wonderful thing. And as everyone has really pointed out, frankly, what we do is so very cost-effective. We run our department very, very lean. We don't waste any money, not nothing, anything. Not supplies or reused cabinets. It's so important that I'm here, and we have doubled our X-ray services without increasing our costs. We are starting to do more X-rays, which allows people, frankly, among other things, to allow them to work because if they've been vaccinated outside of this country, they have a positive PPD status, so until they have an X-ray, it's assumed that they have tuberculosis and they cannot work. But we get those people out first. It's my policy. It works. It helps. And that's what it's about. It's about people. It's about helping community. It's about having continuity of care, and it's something that we can all be proud of, and we shouldn't take away something that really does work so well. We should think about that very carefully. And I would thank you in advance for your ears and your hearing, and I hope your vote and your hard pushing. We really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Morse. Could we have Robert Kozlenko, Sidney Curry, David Rivera, Sean Patterson Howard, and Clacy Cesario come up to the podium, please? Robert Kozlenko?
My name is Robert Kozlenko, and I'm the Director of Clinical Informatics and QA at Mount Vernon Neighborhood Health Center. Healthcare is a right. It's not a privilege. No matter who you are, what you do, or where you live, you and everyone else deserves great, safe, and affordable healthcare. Unfortunately, not everyone can afford easy care or good access to good healthcare. Community healthcare centers were created in the 1960s to provide healthcare for anyone that needs it, including uninsured, underinsured, and low-income persons or families. It's important to remember that community health centers are just that. They are community-based and need support from the community to function. We have a very varied population in Westchester, and all the community healthcare centers located in Westchester serve over 200,000 patients a year with over 500,000 visits. The centers provide services that range from prenatal care to pediatrics, urgent care, and specialists. We need funding to continue our mission, to extend equally to all, regardless of their ability to pay, comprehensive health services of the highest quality in an atmosphere of humane care, dignity, and respect. I've been with the team at Mount Vernon for only five months, and in that time, I've gained a true appreciation for the people that work in the center and what they do. Aside from providing comprehensive health services, they offer great programs, such as our child reading program, that gives out donated books to children who are here for a visit, and staff sits with the kids and reads books with them while they wait for their appointment. Reaching out to the children when they're young and providing books for them to spur an enjoyment in reading at a young age can help them tremendously in the future. I've met the providers, case managers, and related health staff at a project that we have called Ryan White, and it works with HIV-positive patients. And I never met a group more dedicated to making sure that their patients get the best-of-care and follow-up services. Case workers are in constant communication with their patients to make sure that they go to their appointments, take their meds, and get medical help if they need it. Providers will sit down and spend as much time as they need with patients to help make sure that the patient fights that serious disease. The way I see it, the centers are intertwined in their community with many people from the community employed in the centers. We need funding to continue to help our communities, and every last dollar is vital because no matter what, we will always provide excellent healthcare to our patients. We will always continue to help whoever asks for it, no matter their ability to pay, and we will always continue to serve the community. We need your help to do this. Please do the right thing and continue funding in the community health centers. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Carlos Hodgson?
Good evening, everyone. Buenas noches. My name is Carlos Hodgson. Greetings to Virginia Perez. I remember Virginia when she was running to be elected in Second District, and then she became legislator, and I'm very proud of her. The reason why is because of her passion. She never gave up. And tonight, I'm gonna present her with a challenge. I'm gonna present all of you with a challenge. I've lived in Yonkers for thirty-two years. I was a little kid, and we have a serious problem in Yonkers Health Center. It took him three months to get me a cleaning. Three months to get me a cleaning. And the reason why is because they have enough funding. They don't have proper staff. They don't have the help that they need to provide a very poor community like the First and Second District with something that they need so, it is such important. Healthcare in Yonkers Community Health Center is what keeps us healthy. We can't go to work if we're unhealthy. We cannot continue being healthy if there's not preventive medicine. Mrs. Guida Morris is the director. And last time I checked, she is not Jesus Christ. She's a person, and she needs money to run this healthcare the proper way. I am with Voices Community Heard, and I work as a volunteer. I just became a leader. I do what I do for free. I provide my van. I provide my gas. I provide my time because I care. And I would hope and pray that you will be directed by God to do what we need to do to keep First, Second District in Yonkers, Mount Vernon, Newburgh, and all these health centers well-funded because this is something that we cannot play with. Our health has to be first. Thank you.
Thank you. David Rivera? Sidney Curry? Mr. Curry? Sidney?
My name is Walter Lipscomb. Okay, I'm also a leader of Community Voices Heard. Okay, and about the Yonkers Health Center, okay, I mean, any health center, okay? I mean, every time there's cuts, you always wanna start from the bottom, okay? And the people that are going to the health center, those are the people that need, okay? Those are the people that don't have the money, okay? Can y'all hear me out there? All right. But you start at the bottom, okay? And you always wanna, when the cuts come down, it's the low-income families. You wanna cut daycare. You wanna cut health centers, okay? Everybody up here was voted in. You were voted in, okay? When you took that vote, you said, "I do and I will," okay? You made a commitment, and you have an obligation, and all these people here are waiting for you to fulfill your obligation, okay? And cutting health centers, daycare centers, okay? You're cutting the bottom people. You're cutting the poor people. But when it comes for that federal funding, you're counting every one of them, okay? You're getting that money for the federal funding, but you wanna cut us when it comes down to what we need, okay? Do your job, okay? Think about it. Do your job. Do what you're paid to do, okay? You said you made a commitment you was gonna take care of this county. Take care of this county. Don't cut the county. Take care of the county, okay? Very simple. Each one of you are elected officials. You got a commitment. You got an obligation. These people here, okay? We shouldn't have to beg for vital services. And it's vital services, and that's what you wanna cut first, the vital. All right? So if I take your heart out, what? We gonna be sedated later when we get another one in an hour, okay? It doesn't work like that. Okay, you rather pay for the baby instead of the condom, okay? You rather pay for the disease, and you'd rather see people suffering with the disease instead of prevention. Common sense, common sense. You all got common sense. You educated. You got common sense. Do what's right. Like I said, you don't have to beg. Nobody in here should have to be up there begging. This shouldn't even be happening. It shouldn't even have came across the table. Think about it when you're cut. Every action has a reaction, okay? And when it comes times to be voted in again, trust me, what you decide will decide whether or not you serve another county. My name is Walter Lipscomb. I'm with Community Voices Heard.
Thank you very much. David Rivera? Sean Patterson Howard? Clacy Cesario?
I would like to thank the Board of Legislators for allowing me to speak today about the 2013 budget proposed by the county executive, Mr. Rob Astorino. My name is Clacy Cesario, and I'm here today as a representative of Mount Vernon Neighborhood Health Center Network. Most people you will be helping are not here today. However, I speak as a patient advocate for all of those voices you will not hear tonight and faces you will not see. But it is imperative that you know that your votes can and will impact thousands of lives. Our health centers provide services to patients from birth to the end of their lives. The health centers provide the underserved and the uninsured Westchester residents with access to healthcare to detect diseases at the early stages. Patients receive screenings for different types of cancers, the silent diseases called diabetes, heart diseases, HIV/AIDS, and for those who are already sick, as doctors mentioned earlier, they receive medical treatment to stabilize their conditions. If the budget proposed by Mr. Astorino is passed, access to healthcare may be entirely lost, and these patients will have no place where they can turn to or afford. The consequences will be premature death from disorders that could have been prevented or treated otherwise, and the spread of contagious diseases such as STD, STDs, HIV, and other communicable diseases. Overall, this budget cut will disrupt not only the well-being of Westchester residents because of the prevalence of many diseases. because of the prevalence of many diseases, but also will impact us, the society economically. Why is that? With all our respect to all the public health authorities, scientific research, I'm talking about evidence-based research, indicates that medical interventions done by health centers nationwide are cost-effective for us, for taxpayers, and for society. Preventive health and detection of disease at early stages, of course, will cost much less than emergency rooms, visits, and long-term hospitalizations. Dear honorable legislators, please help keep the fund for community health centers viable and alive and serve as a voice for those who might believe they don't have one. Your vote against the proposed elimination of funding for community health centers sends a clear message that as long as you sit on the Board of Legislature for Westchester County, you have the power to make just decisions for those in need. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you would indulge them, we have two people here who are with children and do need to get up to the podium and then leave to take care of their kids. Could we have Marilyn Hernandez and Viviana Davila? And while they're coming to the podium, could we have Dr. Pam Dia, Yesida Okunribido, Dr. Glenn Davis, David Chastinet, and Kim Jacobs?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Viviana. Thank you all for coming. My son is attending Portchester Health Star. He started last September, and since he started, he has changed so much positive, of course. I am here to ask that the rate that the parents are paying don't go any higher. We will... We all benefit from childcare, but the most beneficial are our kids. We... If we can't afford the childcare, we will be pushed to send our kids to babysitters, which means that our kids can be in danger, or they will not be learning anything positive. Or even worse, we will be pushed to quit our jobs. That means that more parents and more people will be dependent on welfare. Nothing should be more important than our kids. They are our future. Thank you, everyone.
Marilyn Hernandez?
Good evening. My name is Marilyn Hernandez. Today I'm speaking about childcare in Portchester. It saved my life. I am a cancer survivor. I suffered. I've had it for four years. I am currently in remission, and the Child Center is what made me being able to go to my therapies possible, because the only support I have right now in New York is my mother, because my husband is currently in the Navy, and he is deployed overseas. So the fact that the children's place was there and gave my children the scholarship, and they gave them the opportunity to be in a learning environment, a safe environment, an environment where you know your child is being fed, your child is being taken care of, is the best thing in the world. And for the working families that have to pay the 20% or 50% of what they make right now, we're all suffering on a budget, and if we could barely pay rent and provide for our families, it's going to make us go to other resources, which parents can't afford. And it's just... It just saves... It just makes our future better, and it just does everything for us. It just gives us a future, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Kimara Gordine? Kimara?
I'm here to help... Oh, sorry. I'm here for all the members of the health center all over Westchester and most of the patients. And like some patients, we are coming here from lower class. We're not all of scale like the majority of the people that are going to private doctors. Some of us have needs, and they haven't been met. When we go to these places... Sorry. When we go to most of these places that we're paying out of pocket, we're not getting the proper healthcare that we need. When we come to the health center, we get the healthcare that we need. We get the friendly faces. We get the smiles. We feel more appreciated as a patient, and it perks us up some days when we are low. I'm a mother of three, and I'm married, and at some point, I... Well, now I'm a mother of four. At one point, I probably would not have been here because I was going to another clinic, and I learned that my plaqueemia was low when I visited the Neighborhood Health Center. And because of them, I had to get an emergency blood transfusion. Now I have four children. I would not have been here for my three children to be a mother of four. So I would like to thank Ms. Morrison and most of the people in the health center that have worked with me one-on-one and others. My mother was a cancer survivor. She is now deceased, and thanks to the Mount Vernon Neighborhood Health Center and other centers that are affiliated with it, it did get my mother the proper treatment that she needed over the 16 years to survive. I would like to say to most of you people here, you come from upscale homes and you're upper class. You look down at us at some point, and we're lower-class people. If you cut the budget, at one point, I hope you know, you can be in our shoes too, and you may have some of the illnesses that we are now struggling with, and we come to the health center for. So at any point, remember, when you spite some of us by cutting us out of the budget, you're not only cutting us, you're cutting yourself or a family member at some point who does not have the resources to get to the clinics.
Thank you.
No. And I just want you to know that most of the programs that the health centers have are to educate some of the youth women. You have some women who come from broken homes and who are now teen mothers, and they don't have the proper care for their children. They don't have the knowledge to nurture their children until they get to the health center. They have programs that help them. They also have specialties. They have urgent care. They have pediatrics, OB. They have dental. They have a lot of departments in their clinics. And me, I'm a mother, and my children are in school. Like I said, once again, I'm so busy doing what I have to do in the daytime while my children are in school. I can't keep taking my kids out of school every chance that I get, and they're open on Saturdays. I have a chance to take them and do some of the, you know, important things that I need to do with them at the clinic. But during the weekday, I can get in six or seven appointments for my children. I can take them all to the dentist at one time, and they can still see pediatrics, adolescents. I can see OB. I can see internal medicine specialties. They meet my needs. I am one of the patients that they set standards for. If you take that away from them and others like me, what do we have? The Mount Vernon Hospital is about to close, or so you keep threatening to close. Last year, you were going to take the WIC department away from the Mount Vernon Health Center and along with other centers. Turning us away, we would have to go to the Bronx, maybe Manhattan, or wherever else that had WIC offices that were available to us, and that's hard. People have jobs, and we don't get paid a lot. But we can get there, but it's going to take time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kim Jacobs?
Good evening. My name is Kim Jacobs, and I'm the Executive Director of Community Capital Resources and co-chair of this year's Westchester Women's Agenda. I'm here tonight to thank you for restoring funding to community capital and for your support of the Agenda's policy document. Restoring community capital will make it possible for us to continue to make the loans that banks cannot or will not make to revitalize our communities. Community capital provides responsible and affordable small business, childcare, energy efficiency, and affordable housing loans to foster opportunity, change lives, and create impact. We appreciate your support, and we'll work diligently in the coming year to give community businesses a chance that many of them can only get from our organization. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Dr. Pam Dia here.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? In the back? Yes. I hope our respected legislator can hear me. So my name is Dr. Pam Dia. I am very proud to present to you that I work for Greenberg Health Center, and I run a special place called Scheck, a single homeless assessment center. If you remember, we were at airport, and we have survived for 25 years. The reason we survived is because we give care to humanity. No matter what, who is in charge or who is in power, we still survive because we take care of the human being, humanity, and we help out the most needed patients in the county. While we are sitting here in a warm, large room, we sleep in a nice, warm bedroom. There are hundreds of people in Westchester County, which is one of the richest counties, but hundreds of people are shivering, and they sleep outside. It could be White Plains. It could be Yonkers. It could be New Rochelle. It could be anywhere. But we are the primary care. We take care of people. I am on call for White Plains Hospital. If any of this most needed, most vulnerable person need help tonight, I will wake up 2:00 in the morning to help them out. To cutting their budget is like cutting the lifeline of the patient who is in ICU. So please hear to us, and please make sure that you let us do the most basic humanity and human care. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Glenn Davis?
Good evening, legislators. I'm Dr. Glenn Davis. I'm the Deputy Medical Director at the Greenberg Health Center, where I've served for over 20 years. My associate, Dr. Pam Dia, has served for over 30 years. I would like to give you some idea of the level of commitment that our staff has. It is a driving force for me every day to work with such committed, knowledgeable administration and physician staff. We are about excellence in terms of healthcare. Healthcare needs... Excellence in healthcare needs funding. The level of your sonogram machine, your radiographic equipment, your otoscope, all relies on appropriate funding. So I am here to oppose the proposed cut in funding to our health center and the health centers in the county. I don't see the sense in this, and we need funding to do what we do. And we not only serve the underinsured and homeless in the county, we, based on our level of care, see many of our ministers in the county. We see physicians. We see attorneys in our offices, and they are quite satisfied with the level of care that they receive. So in closing, I would like to change the perspective that we have in this country in terms of treating illness once it's occurred. Primary care is on the front-runner of healthcare in our nation, finally. It's not about getting sick anymore and then going to your doctor. It's about preventing illness, and that's what we do. And we do it well, and we do it right. I would like to encourage your support now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. David Chastinet? While David's coming up, could we please have Dustin Abraham, Mary Fitzgerald, Benjamin Dodu, MD, Dr. Benjamin Dodu, Karen Pacora, and Juliette Acoviar? Thank you.
My name is David Chastinet. Dr. David Chastinet, I provide radiology services at the Greenberg Health Center, and specifically sonogram services. Primarily, we treat the working poor and those who cannot afford. If these people... If you cut pay... Funding program, this will affect us directly, and they have no place to go to other than emergency rooms. And I honestly believe we should continue the funding so that we can continue to do what we do. Every week, we pick up patients that are very important, and we feel we do a good care, and I hope we can continue the funding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, legislators. My name is Dustin Abraham. I'm an employee of the Mount Vernon Health Center. Been there for 25 years and at Greenberg for 10 of those years. Perhaps no other issue defines the well-being of a community than the quality of the health service that is available. And to that end, Mount Vernon Health Center provides healthcare services that are of the highest quality and of the affordable cost. I don't know if any of you have ever gotten a chance to come to the center to see what we do, but if you did, you would meet administrators who are passionate in their vision to provide quality healthcare. You will meet doctors and other healthcare workers who are committed to patient care, and you would meet patients who are grateful and appreciative of the care that we provide. So please restore the funding, enable us to expand what we do. Cutting healthcare services does not mean that you cut the need. The need will still be there, and in the end, it will be more costly and more disastrous if the services were not provided. So thank you for your time, and please consider what I've said.
Thank you.
First, I would like to thank the Board of Legislators for coming here tonight to hear all the people voice their concern for the proposed budget cuts. CSEA 9,200 workers are not the problem, but the hard-working, dedicated individuals that contribute to making Westchester work and are being targeted because we won't settle our contract. We are not earning the big salaries that the public may think that we are. CSEA employees are not breaking the bank. We are only trying to survive. We live in Westchester and work in Westchester, and we love Playland. So please, if you're going to make it better, do a great job, because I know a lot of people that love it. If you lay off the CSEA workers' payroll at higher salaries... I messed up. Then everyone will be out in DSS to get services, and that's not solving the problem. We can't let that happen. So please, save our jobs. Don't take the employees that work hard and live in Westchester. We thank you for being here and do the right thing. Save our jobs. And thank you, Mary Jane Shumisky. I hope I didn't make a mistake with your name, but I voted for you, and you're doing a great job. And everyone else.
Thank you. Dr. Benjamin Dodu?
Good evening, county legislator. Let me just recognize you that you're the most powerful people in this county. So I want to put on record that I just don't want you to reinstate it. I probably requesting that you increase it or even double it, and the reason being that what Mrs. Morrison said is not just imaginary. I took care of that patient who went... Came to the center, and Mrs. Morris arranged for that patient to get into White Plains Hospital. I finished work on Thursday at 8:00. I went to admit her. On Thursday, when she was... Friday, she was supposed to have the cardiac catheterization. In the morning, she has episodes of rapid ventricular tachycardia, which she could have died if she was outside the hospital. died if she was outside the hospital. And when she had the cardiac catheterization, I went and discharged her on Saturday. Yesterday, she came and she was doing well, very. So thank you, Mrs. Morris, and thank you, Mrs. Watson. So these are not just imaginary things, they are real things which has happened. So I want to put it on record. Secondly, I, the reason why we should get more money is that they will tell you that we are not competitive. We are not able to compete with other organizations from Saris. So each time, people are, they come in on entry level and they leave because they go to get where they can be paid better. So this is the reason why you should not cut it by actually increasing. The third point, and then I've done, is that we, myself and Dr. Davis, we've been recognizing New York State as doctors who are excellent in treating diabetes. We know that there's an epidemic of diabetes and it's a great honor that the New York State had doctors such as us who are taking care of diabetic patients. And because of this, it's important to leave the, our budget or even increase it so that we can offer more services to those who deserve it. I thank you very much. You have the power to reinstate this budget and even increase it. Thank you very much for braving this cold weather to be here with us tonight. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you. Karen Pacora.
Good, good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Karen Pacora and I'm the President of CSEA Unit 9200. The hardworking, dedicated, and professional employees of Westchester County, we make Westchester work. I'd like, I'd like to ask all the CSEA members here to please stand up. These are the people that make Westchester work. These are the people that are going to be without a job at the end of the year. I first want to say thank you to the Budget Appropriations Committee for restoring 126 positions back into the 2013 budget. I know at this time of year, the committee and the, and the entire board have difficult decisions to make and I sincerely want to say, on behalf of 3,200 CSEA members, that we appreciate the position the Board of Legislators are in, the decisions that have to be made, and, and all the work and the support that you give us. Our hope is that the entire board will work to keep the positions in the budget. The taxpayers need these services and the taxpayers deserve these services. As you know, CSEA is currently trying to negotiate a new contract with Westchester County and to date, we have not been able to find an agreement that is acceptable to the county and CSEA, but that does not mean we're not trying. We have another session scheduled for tomorrow and I want to emphasize again that CSEA has never refused to contribute to the cost of our healthcare benefits. We proposed our own Job for Savings Plan, which included contributions and other concessions, which the county executive did not accept. CSEA is doing whatever we can to preserve the services expected by the taxpayers with an agreement that is fair to the county, the union, and the taxpayers. My last thought is this. All the support received, CSEA received over the years from the Board of Legislators will come back twofold next year and in the future. Thank you for your time. I would like to issue all a very happy and healthy holiday and, and a happy holiday season and a happy, healthy 2013. And I'm gonna relinquish the rest of my time to Juliette Aguiar.
Thank you, Karen. Juliette.
My name is Juliette Aguiar and I'm yielding my time to Quabena Manu.
Good evening, honorable members of the Board of Legislators. I am Quabena Manu, First Vice President of CSEA Unit 9200. Unlike the previous years, I come before you this evening to plead with you, for all those who will care to do so, to look into the, to take a forensic look into the hiring practices of Westchester County's Human Resource Department. And then when you move forward, take a look at the other various departments and especially the Department of Social Services. The county executive has flooded the Department of Social Services with numerous provisional appointments and about 90% of these new hires earn more salaries than the eligibility examiners that are slated to lose their jobs in this budget. Effective November 15th, 2012, five employees were promoted to the position of eligibility clerks while 10 new people were hired as eligibility clerks. My question to this ethical and rational board is, will you sit unconcerned and allow Rob Astorino to do anything that he wants with the Westchester County government? I know what some of your answers will be. Why would he want to get rid of about 50 DSS employees, mostly eligibility examiners, who have so many years in county service while he continues to employ friends and families to fill these same positions? This is nepotism at its worst. County parking spaces have been offered to Astorino's friends and campaign workers while long-serving county CSEA employees are deprived of parking spaces. The blame game, the blame game that, the blame game of CSEA not willing to make concessions and negotiate in good faith is an outright lie. What we did not do was make concessions to threats of layoffs and unreasonable demands. The truth must be told. And somewhere I read that no lie can live forever. Under the, under the marching orders of Astorino, some departmental heads and program directors have threatened, threatened and warned CSEA employees who are not affected by the layoffs in the proposed 2013 budget to stay away from the public hearings, let alone speak against it. Dictatorial tendencies should not be tolerated in the body politics of Westchester County's government. The dictatorial threats and utterances here in Westchester County, in my opinion, are beginning to bear semblance to a not-too-long-ago Egypt and Libya, but without the violence, the violence and the bloodshed. I am also very aware that Mussolini and Napoleon died a long time ago, but maybe they have been reincarnated in Westchester County. The way the county executive interprets the county charter and the laws that are enacted by the legislature and his continued disregard for the process is nothing short of dictatorship. This in turn creates a gridlock that ultimately works against the hard-working and taxpaying residents of this great county. We are CSEA Unit 9200 and whatever affects one of our members directly affects all of us indirectly. We will not sell our hard-fought benefits of so many years for peanuts. Just because Rob Astorino comes around and flips a coin at us as if we were burgers does not mean we should extend our hands and accept it. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, layoffs and outsourcing are certainly not the way to reward dedicated CSEA employees.
Thank you.
CSEA has been neglected for far too long. Bad times and bad budgets should never take priority over human livelihood.
Thank you very much.
Need, I think I got nine minutes. My, my three, her three, and Karen's one and a half, seven and a half minutes. So please look at, the timekeeper, please look at it.
Um.
No, they gave me their time.
No, I think we just had the Juliette.
They meant they gave me their time.
Yep. No.
Needless to say, you have all seen the numerous discrepancies and inaccuracies in the proposed budget. Westchester County does not have a deficit. God bless you all and have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much.
Since you're chasing me away.
Thank you. We have some more children with us. Could they start coming up to the podium? It's Karina Kraft, Elena Coppola, and Juliana Coppola, as well as Rasan Sabre and Deana Williams. We also have with us Yonkers City Council President Chuck Lesnick. If you want to come to the podium, this would be a good time. Thank you.
I don't want to come before the kids, but I don't see them. Madam Budget Chair, Chairman Jenkins, honorable members of the County Board of Legislators, I'm saddened to hear of the county executive's proposal to eliminate important funding for necessary social service and childcare programs in our county, a large trunk of which will drastically and unfairly impact those in the city of Yonkers where I'm council president. Like each of you, I am a proponent of restructuring government to eliminate redundant services and wasteful spending. I would strongly suggest that the county executive act more with a scalpel than an axe when he proposes funding cuts to critical programs that so many of our residents have come to utilize to make it through these hard economic times. Some have said that the proposed cut to childcare is but a tiny portion of the county's budget. However, the funding is absolutely crucial for working families. As legislator Virginia Perez knows, because she spoke at Queen's Daughters in Yonkers, childcare not only allows for parents to work, but it's tremendously important in developing the children's socialization and language skills. The proposed budget eliminates funding for the neighborhood health centers and raises the parent's share for subsidized daycare up to 35%. This cut would further disadvantage those children from working poor families as they enter kindergarten less prepared than their peers. Westchester County needs to make children and education a priority for all families. If these cuts are allowed to go through, the loss of the program funding will force families to make impossible decisions between keeping their jobs or finding affordable childcare. Combined with cuts for youth programs and to parks, the 125 proposed layoffs would seriously impact staff needed for those important resources. I am concerned also with the serious obesity epidemic that would only grow if children are not able to fully use our parks and its programs. Yonkers and the area face the continued closure of the Spray Ridge Pool, a huge loss to our youth, our residents' quality of life. The pool was never intended to be permanently closed. It was scheduled to be a lap pool when improvements to Tibbetts Brook created a county water park. I urge you to reopen the Spray Ridge Pool. Thank you, swimmers. While the county executive continues to wrestle with litigation concerning the federal housing case, you should not continue to penalize those communities that have embraced affordable housing, such as that just recently built by Greyston Foundation in Yonkers. The county still owes the city of Yonkers $2.5 million for building the new garage there to accommodate the residents and commuters who will park there. Please honor your promise. I'll sum up in a second. Last night at a public council meeting in Yonkers, the SFC developers of our long-promised downtown Renaissance said that the affordable housing requirement that they agreed to in 2008, 12%, was predicated on the county money for parking infrastructure for low-income housing programs. They cannot do it without it. I realize that you're only one branch of the government and I take, I thank you for the time that you're taking to listen to everybody here and amplify their voices when you deliberate about the budget. I urge you to work with the county executive to restore vital programming for our children and all of their residents.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lesnick. Karina, Elena, and Juliana.
Hello, we're here to support the Westchester County Parks. First, I'd like to introduce Karina Kraft.
I'm, I'm 10, I'm 10 years old and I've been going to Cranberry for four years. It was always really fun because the counselors were so nice, always, no matter how unhappy or in what kind of a bad mood we were. And even when I got really many stings from yellow jackets, they helped me right away. They gave me ice packs, they let me sit in the lodge, and there was always many people to help and entertain me, make me happy. I really like Cranberry because it's nature and I think that it should stay there and it should stay like it is and I've made so many friends there and, please don't cut the budget.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Elena and I have been going to Cranberry Lake for five years. I like Cranberry Lake because exploring the lake and hiking is so much fun. It's something to do with your family and friends. Please don't cut the budget. Thank you.
Karina? Oh, that was you. Thank you very much. Rasan Sabre?
Good evening, my name is Rasan Sabri. I'm a resident of Mount Vernon, New York. On behalf of Mount Vernon Youth, we would like to thank you for restoring the Safe Haven After School Program, which is sponsored by Mount Vernon City Hall. Also, we would like to thank you for everything that you, that you do in Mount Vernon. Thank you.
Thank you. Deana Williams?
Hello, good evening. My name is Deana Williams and I would first like to thank you all for allowing us this opportunity to come here tonight and for you to, for you to take the time to listen to us. I'm here as a concerned citizen and a taxpayer in the city of Mount Vernon and I would like to thank you for reinstating the programs that you support, the Safe Haven Program, the Youth Empowerment Program, as well as the Step Up Program. I am here with a fraction of the youth that are served by the Mount Vernon Youth Bureau. And although they are a little too shy to speak tonight, they definitely want to thank you and they wanted to be here tonight. So I also want to thank you for letting us speak a little sooner so that they could get home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carleen Bryan. I'm from Mount Vernon. I'm an active parent since my two boys' life. I remember my 16-year-old, his old, came home one day and said, mommy, I, I live from grace to disgrace. So I said, what do you mean by that? He said, mommy, I can't even help myself in the way of feed, clothing. I said, no, I'm the one supposed to care for you. He said, but mommy, you don't have a job. You lost your job. So I went to school to speak to a principal at Longfellow Middle School to find what is he going on with. And I said, he, he is a straight A student, he don't have the interest in schoolwork, he don't have interest in anything, self-esteem gone. So I said, what can I do to help? He said, there is a program at City Hall named Youth Bureau. I'm gonna contact a gentleman by the name of, um, Mr., um, I don't remember the name, Mr. Woodbury and put him, get him involved in it. When I spoke to Mr. Woodbury a couple days after and find out what this program is like, he said, bring him to me and let me talk to him. So I, myself and I went down because we have to interview, find out what's going on and all of that. Then he started to smile. Mommy, is it I'm getting on track? I said, yes, son, yes. You're not gonna be a victim of this. My, my problem. So I'm here to thank you all to make a difference in my son's life. I would have lose him, I'm gonna end up the wrong place. Thank you very much for the hard work and the support you put in this program step on the Youth Bureau program all about in Mount Vernon. Thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. I'm here from three o'clock.
Thank you so much. Could we have Quabena Manu, Teri Rela, Paul Thompson, Ilio Giuliani, and Nelson Liked, Sure, this number's 27, 28, 29, 30, and 31. But there have been quite a few who have spoken already that we took out of order. But there have been quite a few have, who have spoken already that we took out of order. They, they children. Who? Oh, he did speak. Quabena spoke, sorry. Teri Rela.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Teresa Rela, and I'm a lifelong Westchester resident, homeowner, taxpayer, and Westchester County employee. I am grateful that in Westchester County, we have a legislative board who not only is committed to serving the needs of its county residents, but also care enough about our great county as a whole. This is the third year that I stand before you as an employee of Public Works, and I attribute my position to each one of you here today. I thank you for believing in me and the entire county workforce. It is with an open heart and mind that I express my appreciation to you all for your due diligence in taking the time to analyze the proposed budget to assure fiscal integrity and for making the decision, the right decision, to not only save vital services for the good people of Westchester County, but also sustain the workforce of Westchester County. Thank you for not taking the easy way out. Thank you for making a difference to the hundreds of families in Westchester who benefit and thrive from the services provided by county employees. And thank you for giving us our lives and our livelihood back. Please continue to do what you do best, as our citizens and residents depend on you to preserve the honor and the beauty of Westchester County. Let the storm of truth be your motto, and together, we will continue to make Westchester work. Thank you, and happy holidays.
Thank you, Teri. Paul Thompson? Are these the, um, these are finished?
Uh, good evening. I have copies. That's a little bit more detailed, but I'm gonna cut it back because a lot of people have been talking about some very interesting things. I want to thank you all for restoring the positions. However, the position I'm talking about is a position that was cut. I work for the data processing department, IT, or DOIT, as many people call it. I'm a computer operator. There were four of us. We would have to work three days a week, 12 hours, 40 minutes each day. One of our people retired in September. Right now, we are doing a 50-to-60-hour work week, just to handle keeping the computer services in Westchester County up. Now, we had to work, uh, for a lot of hours. I worked for 48 hours straight through Sandy. I worked for another 24 hours through the snowstorm that we had to make sure that the emergency services would stay up so that everyone would be there, of course, the police, uh, you know, EMS, all of that as well. This position is very necessary. In the next year, if this position is eliminated, we will not be able to keep the computer center open 24 hours a day. That means we cannot guarantee that services will remain up. I wish you to consider that in depth. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Ilio Giuliani?
I'm giving my time to Vincent Altamari from the Department of Public Works.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Board. Thank you for restoring mine and everybody else's positions. Um, we all know this is only round one. Um, a little bit of a recap, as of the end of last year, 800 positions have been removed from Westchester County, um, worker, workforce, at, um, an supposedly an $80 million savings in payroll. Where did that money go? Um, letting go of the 12 of us in DPW is a loss of revenue of about $17,000 for each one of us, above and beyond what our salaries and what our benefits cost. Um, we, our salaries and benefits are paid out of capital projects that we design and manage the construction. Our salaries are paid for out of the capital budgets, so we are not a burden on the county as portrayed. We provide thousands of hours of non-chargeable, uh, work, non-billable work throughout the year as part of our daily functions. Uh, you can't get consultants, you'll never get consultants to do, put in that time that we do. As long as there are these capital projects, we can keep working. The county could not afford to pay consultants to operate on call and switch gears on a moment's notice the way the county DPW workers do. You have projects that are slated that we go out to every day, phone calls come in, change direction. Consultants are gonna wanna know how much money they're gonna get paid to stop and change direction. How much extra are they gonna get? We work for our, just our daily salaries. There are, I don't, I don't know how many buildings that we have to service, public services, the jail, labs and research. There are, what, 19 dams, 46 pump stations, uh, 17 sewage treatment plants, and how many other county buildings, the social services buildings that we service, we maintain, we make sure that everything stays functioning. We keep county government working. Without us, you guys would have a hard time communicating, do, getting anything done. Um, I thank you for saving our jobs at this point. Hopefully, everybody remembers the next couple of weeks what we do. The loss of our services to the county will impact all of you in each municipality. Your local taxes will go up with the loss of Department of Public Works services maintaining all these facilities in your community. You're gonna have to explain to your local taxpayers why their taxes are gonna go through the roof when we're not do, able to do their job. Thank you.
Thank you. Would Nelson Lecht come to the podium? And as he's coming forward, could we have Jeff Diamond, Carleen Brian, Joan Blackburn, Susan Logriere, uh, Carol Robinson, and Eric Segal, please?
My name is Nelson Leit, and I'm speaking on behalf of Cornell Cooperative Extension. I'd like to thank the Board of Legislators, uh, for their support in the past. When I first moved to my home in Westchester County almost 50 years ago, I was a city guy from the Bronx. I lived in an apartment house. Vegetables were something you purchased at a supermarket. Soon I discovered that I had a small space that might be suitable for growing vegetables. I tried doing things myself, but discovered that I needed assistance. Someone I met suggested that I contact Cornell Cooperative Extension. This started a longstanding relationship where for many years, I received invaluable assistance on how to grow vegetables successfully. When I retired some years ago, I decided to become a master gardener volunteer with Cornell Cooperative Extension and give something back to the community. The work that the extension does goes far beyond just helping the home gardener. It benefits the entire horticultural community, including professional landscapers, schools, small businesses, et cetera, and the assistance given is invaluable. CCE includes some of the most beneficial programs to the community. Horticultural and pest management, nutrition education, and 4H programs. Especially successful has been the demonstration gardens at Hartsburg Park and Preserve in Hartsdale and at Hilltop Hanover Farm in Yorktown Heights. These gardens are worked by volunteers. Many are retirees who are seriously interested in preserving our environment and helping the community. There are also children's gardens to educate middle-school-aged children who are interested in nutrition and the benefits of gardening. The county will lose thousands of hours of volunteer service if these programs were to cease. I volunteer at Hartsburg Park. This year, almost 2,000 pounds of vegetables were grown and delivered to the soup kitchen at Grace Church Community Center in White Plains to help the needy in our community. The budgeting process is not a simple matter, but to emasculate a program that has benefited the community for years and which improves all the time is not an option for the citizens of Westchester County. I ask you to please restore full funding to this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Diamond?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jeff Diamond, and, um, I, I also just wanted to say that I, I serve on a local school board, so we sometimes have to grapple, uh, with difficult budget questions as well. Um, just sitting here tonight, I, I just felt that I should say, I thought it was ironic and sad that a rich county like Westchester, uh, can no longer afford many valuable programs and services, uh, that people are advocating for tonight, because over time, we've created a structurally unsustainable cost to our government. As a point in case, I'm very concerned about the long-term ramifications of the proposed $35 million in borrowing in this budget that's intended to meet current pension contributions. How are those dollars ever going to be paid back without creating more financial strain in future years, when budgets will be ever tighter and new pension contributions will come due? This Board of Legislators is truly given an impossible task. Most people here don't realize that 80 to 90 percent of local budgets, whether on the county level or the local municipalities or school boards, are dictated by New York state mandates, and that local officials have little power to make any changes to the large portion of their budget, and we only control a sliver of, of our own budgets, maybe 10 to 15 percent. And that's what you all are grappling with when you hear the concerns of the public. With the rising cost, uh, with the cost of the main part of the budget rising so rapidly, um, and that's the part that we don't control, I don't see any good or realistic choices Uh, so, you know, this board really should urge everyone here who is advocating for the Board of Legislators to protect their interests and support their cause and save their programs, to contact their New York state senators and New York State Assembly person, because if things don't change in Albany, then our budgets in Westchester will never improve. So I thank you for taking the time tonight to hear the public. I hope that you will lobby Albany in your capacity, and in the meantime, while we wait for mandate relief from Albany, which may be a very long wait, I hope that all of you, all of your decisions in creating next year's budget will keep an eye to the long-term financial health of Westchester County so that our, all residents will know that necessary programs and services will remain viable. Thank you.
Thank you. Carleen Brian? Joan Blackburn?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Joan Blackburn, and I'm here on behalf of the Pace Women's Justice Center. The Justice Center is a proud member of the Westchester Women's Agenda. First of all, I would like to thank you for your past support of our domestic violence services and for restoring funding for our elder abuse services in this 2013 budget process. We urge you to continue your support for these two vital elder abuse programs, the first of which is our elder abuse legal services. It's no secret that Westchester County's older population is increasing, and at the same time, the number of elder abuse victims is increasing and is going to keep on continuing. We are the only Westchester County legal services provider focusing exclusively on elder abuse issues. In all of our cases, our clients would not be able to retain attorneys because the cost is way too high. Since 2005, we have provided free legal services to more than 1,000 elder abuse victims. The second grant is our elder law community education program, and through this program, we train seniors and their caregivers throughout Westchester on their legal rights. And by educating seniors, we seek to keep them safe from elder abuse, from financial scams, and we try to give them the knowledge they need to manage their health issues and their financial affairs so that they remain safe. We hope sincerely that you will continue to support these programs throughout the 2013 budget process. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Susan Cooper? Susan? Lac, Susan? Carol Robinson? Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
Good evening. In light of the bigger picture, I would like to excerpt a few passages from the State Budget Task Force report released in July 2012 by two prominent Democrats, Richard Ravitch and Paul Volcker. They state that they created this report out of, quote, "Their growing concern about long-term fiscal sustainability of the states and the persistent structural imbalance in state budgets." Furthermore, the report states, "Where local governments are on the hook for a substantial share of unfunded pension promises, as in New York, California, and Illinois, the resulting pressure is hitting them hard. The lack of financial transparency makes it more difficult for the public to understand the critical nature of problems such as pension and other payment obligations. The conclusion of the task force is unambiguous. The existing trajectory of state spending, taxation, and administrative, administrative practices cannot be sustained. The basic problem is not cyclical, it is structural. The time to act is now. The ability of local governments to respond to stress is constrained by state rules and may be eased by state legislature." I would add in this case that that means the Albany Legislature. Many here are pleading for services not to be cut. In actuality, people should be asking Albany. It is the Albany Legislature that is forcing the hand of localities to pay for escalating mandated expenses that will increase taxes in perpetuity and reduce services simultaneously. This is affecting not just the county, but all localities, towns, villages, and schools. In general, the public needs more transparency and clear information about how mandates from Albany are crowding out services and how taxes will continue to rise in the already highest taxed county in the nation without meaningful mandate relief performed from Albany. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Susan. Carol Robinson?
Good evening, Honorable Board of Legislators. My name is Carol Robinson. I am the Early Childhood Director for the YWCA Childcare Center, where our mission is to eliminate racism and empower women. The YWCA is a proud member of the Westchester Women's Agenda. I'm here tonight to thank you for your support for quality early education, and I know that you know that it makes a difference, but I'm here to remind you to help us cut that pipeline from the cradle to the prisons. And one- And one of the ways we can do that is to provide families that don't have the means to pay for quality childcare subsidies. It is very important for our young people to get on that level playing field that will prepare them for the future. We are creating in our programs, young people who will learn to think analytically. We're providing education and I'm asking you to continue to give us your support. I'm also, I would also like to thank you for supporting our supervised visitation program at the YWCA and I also urge for your continuous support. I know your job is hard. It's tough economic times. There's cuts at the federal level and I get it, but I'm also gonna ask that when you go about your business, remember to lobby to get back the block grant to New York State, the education block grant. It will certainly help us. Please, as you make your decisions, remember you're holding the future generation in the palm of your hands, some of whom will decide whether or not some of you will have Social Security. And we want to have, we want to develop children that will have empathy, children that will care, and we are the models for them. And ladies and gentlemen, more is taught than is taught. Thank you very much and God bless you all.
Thank you, Carol. Eric Siegel. And while Eric is coming up to the podium, could we have Sharice Ashford, Ralph Hansen, Jesse Mendez, Lisa Rosenblum, and Dean Zaras come forward? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eric Siegel. I'm ceding my time to Eileen Neiman.
Good evening, Honorable Legislators. My name is Eileen Neiman and I am a resident of Rye, an active volunteer and the current president of the Board of the Rye Arts Center. There are many compelling reasons for government to support the arts, but I want to focus on the most critical tonight. The first is economic. I'm personally involved in the Rye Arts Center because it is truly the heart of our community. It is a safe haven for kids and a place where both adults and kids go to stretch their minds and imaginations. But the center is also an economic anchor. When we go to the center, we spend money in town, shopping locally, stopping for coffee, eating in a restaurant, or buying a treat for our kids. The Rye Arts Center is not unique. Here is a story to illustrate the point. A local restaurant in Peekskill reports that 25% of its business is generated by visitors to the Paramount. Without the Paramount, local restaurants and shops are threatened. The arts positively contribute to local economies is not just a true fact in Peekskill. It is also occurring at the Emeline Theater in Mamaroneck, the Music Hall in Tarrytown, Jacob Burns in Pleasantville, the Picture House and Pelham Arts Center in Pelham, and Arts Westchester in downtown White Plains. When I look at each of you, I see the communities that you represent and I see how important the arts are in those communities. In Yonkers, I see the Untemeyer Performing Arts Center and the Fine Arts Orchestra providing a center for community life. In Nurishell, I see the Nurishell Arts Council's Arts Fest bringing hundreds of people to downtown where they support the local economy. In Katona, I see the Karamore Center for Music and the Arts and the Katona Museum, which drive tourists and dollars to Westchester. In Portchester, I see a nationally recognized clay arts center that has become a true partner in community development. In addition to their positive economic impact in each of your districts, the arts are also important to our communities because they provide critical services to the underserved. At the art center, for example, we provide classes to Head Start kids from Portchester and a dance program for senior citizens with Parkinson's. But again, our organization is not unique. Others serve in the community in this way. Steffi Nossen Dance provides creative movement for children and adults who use wheelchairs. The Music Conservatory has an extraordinary music therapy program. And Arts Westchester brings artists to shelters and mental health facilities. And increasingly, arts organizations are filling education gaps in arts and music programs in our schools as districts struggle with the realities of the 2% tax cap and the pressures to teach to the test. This at a time when outside classroom walls, businesses, and industries are focusing on the need for creative thinkers in an increasingly competitive marketplace. Finally, the arts are one of the single most important measures of equality of life. This is particularly important to a county that is seeking to attract and retain young professionals and their families. Along with our open spaces and good schools, young professionals and their families want to live in a vibrant, culturally rich area like Westchester. So thank you for restoring the arts to the items you add back to the proposed budget. The benefits to all of us are tangible. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharice Ashford.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Legislators, Brother and Sister Officers, Ladies and Gentlemen. I'd like to express my appreciation to the Board of Legislators for this opportunity to speak tonight on behalf of the Westchester County Probation Officers Association. I am probation officer Ralph Hansen, S.H.I.E.L.D. number 116, and I'm currently assigned to the Domestic Violence Unit. I have served as a probation officer to the County Probation Department for 27 years. In fact, I have more than doubled my age during my tenure with Westchester probation. Yes, it's true, I once had hair. I would like to thank the Board of Legislators and past boards for its steadfast and unwavering support of the probation department throughout the years, especially these past few. I've seen a lot of change during my tenure with the department. Most of it has been good. Over the years, the Westchester County Probation Department has grown into a model probation department whose programs and practices were duplicated and emulated by probation departments across the state and even the country. In the space of 15 years, from 1989 to 2004, it made great strides toward excellence. However, the department has suffered massive reductions of officers, supervisors, and support staff from the early retirement incentives of 2010 and from attrition and budget cuts since. In 2009, the year before the Retirement Incentive Program, the Department of Probation employed 179 officers and 34 supervising probation officers. By contrast, the County Executive's proposed budget for 2013 would provide for 145 probation officers and 24 supervisors. It becomes increasingly difficult to effectively supervise offenders and provide mandated services when officers and supervisors are steadily lost to attrition and budget cuts. It also costs more. On August 1st, 2010, the inmate population at the Westchester County Jail was 1,361. On August 1st, 2011, a year later, it was 1,472. And a year after that, on August 1st, 2012, it was 1,509. This trend not only coincides with the loss of probation officers and supervisors, but it's a trend observed in 1991 after 24 probation officers were laid off from their jobs. That said, it costs $300 per day to incarcerate an offender and $10 per day for probation supervision. Perhaps the most compelling reason for keeping probation officers and supervisors employed and even adding more is that probation is the most often utilized alternative to incarceration and over 6,100 offenders on probation in Westchester County on any given day. We keep Westchester's community safe and we do it economically and we do it best. Thank you for your support in our efforts to keep Westchester safe.
Thank you, Ralph. Jesse Mendez.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Rosenblum. I'm a member of the Board of the Austin Children's Center, which has provided high-quality early education to the children of low-income working families in Westchester County for more than 100 years. As Board Member of the Children's Center, I would like to thank you for restoring childcare funding to the budget. Those funds will keep fees more manageable for low-income working parents for whom any significant increase may make childcare unaffordable. I also urge the County Executive to preserve these funds in the budget. To my mind, cuts to childcare that seem penny-wise in the current budget are actually pound foolish, even in the near term. Good childcare delivers school-ready kids with their feet on the past educational success. Kids who lack good early education and begin school unready never make up the deficit as numerous independent studies have shown. An investment in children now can avert a world of more costly and much less effective remediation later. With our children and the quality of our future workforce in mind, I for one urge the county to maintain a robust investment in our children today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. Dean Zaras. While Dean's coming forward, could we have Arlene Leuzzi, Rob Russell, Frank Colombo, Jason Luer, and Joy Rosenzweig, please? Thank you.
Members, sorry, members of the Board and members of the public. My name is Dean Zaras. I speak tonight as a taxpayer, an 18-year resident of Westchester County, a husband, a father of three kids who spent all their time in public schools here in Westchester. My wife and I work anywhere from 100 to 120 hours a week trying to do the best we can for our kids, our church, our community. I'm also a member of a new group in Westchester called Best for New York. I don't envy any of your positions, but I want to talk, as a couple of the other people have, a little bit about the bigger picture. The rate of growth of the cost of government cannot be allowed to exceed the rate of growth of the taxpayers' incomes, period. Simply put, government must live within its means, period. What we're seeing here tonight is the natural result of asking our government to do too much at all levels, federal, state, county, and local. Instead of focusing on growing the pie, society splinters into groups, each fighting for their share of the pie. Civil society is often the casualty. Necessary prioritizations become nearly impossible as emotions rule the day. It is obvious that every speaker here tonight requesting that their particular project not be affected by potential budget cuts is 100% well-meaning and heartfelt. However, it is immoral to allow government to grow in a way that the people have to pay, who have to pay for it, cannot afford to do so. It is immoral to allow government to grow in a way that only the rich can afford to live here. We all hear plenty of talk about diversity. What about socioeconomic diversity, socio-economic diversity? Do we really want to build structural imbalances into our government where a tyranny of a well-intentioned majority dictates the rate of growth of the cost of government in a way that the minority is forced to move? But likewise, we must not fall into the politics of envy where perhaps a different majority looks upon the assets of a minority and sees not private property, but a money pot ready to be tapped. We should applaud the efforts of our political leaders who often do thankless jobs like yourselves, always with equally good intentions. However, these leaders in government have the duty to act responsibly, to prioritize our spending within our ability to pay for it and to at least on occasions, say no. So let's have a debate about what our priorities are and what the role of government with its attendant costs should be. If education, for example, if education, for example, or providing healthcare to the neediest among us is a top priority, let's direct our resources in that manner. But our total spending must be constrained by our collective ability to pay. And if we want to increase our collective ability to pay, we must do so by increasing our collective ability to earn, not by class warfare and government fiat. Anything less than this is immoral, period. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Arlene Leuzzi and I have been the Subsidy Coordinator at the Childcare Council of Westchester for the past five years. In that position, I speak to thousands of parents and hundreds of childcare providers all the time. I know you've heard from others who spoke before you about the educational and economic benefits of funding childcare subsidy and keeping the family share fee at 20%. So I thought I'd share with you one particular parent's story. This particular parent is receiving childcare subsidy when social services sent out notices that raised the family share fee to 35% earlier this year, since rescinded and back in place again. A parent contacted me completely distraught. This parent was previously married and had one child and was living a middle-class life until her husband left her. She has been trying to pursue child support but has been unsuccessful. She was a stay-at-home mom but was able to find a job that pays $500 a week. Between her rent, her car payments, her car insurance, her health insurance, and the $181 a month she has to pay toward childcare, that leaves her about $200 a month for food, clothing, gas, et cetera. If the parent share fee goes up to 35%, her fee will be $317 a month, an increase of $136, which will leave her $76 a month to pay for food, clothing, gas, et cetera. This parent is struggling to hold her head above water. If the parent share fee goes up to 35%, this parent will drown. This parent called me again today, which reminded me about her, because yesterday she received notice in the mail that the parent share fee is going up to 35% as of January 1st. She is distraught and she doesn't know what to do. This is not an atypical story. This is just another story. I urge the Board of Legislators to allocate enough funding to support childcare subsidy and to keep the parent share fee at 20%. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Arlene.
Good evening. I'm Rob Russell with the Department of Emergency Services. I have Jason Luer and Frank Colombo with me who are also slated to speak and are going to yield some of their time to me to speak as one on behalf of the department in the interest of time. Good evening, Honorable Legislators. I would like to start by thanking the Budget Committee for unanimously restoring all the positions to the 2013 proposed budget, especially the five positions at DES. In the past budget hearings I have stood before you and testified as to the vital role that DES and all of its employees have in the county's public safety net, and tonight will be no different. Whether it is answering 911 calls, training firefighters, certifying paramedics, pre-planning for disasters, or responding to hazardous conditions and emergencies, our day-to-day activities impact every aspect of the county's emergency responder network. Our technical experts, our specialized equipment, and our unique facilities are not offered elsewhere in the county and dare I say, are second to almost none in the country. In short, we do what no one else does and we do it exceptionally well. But look beyond our outstanding training numbers, look beyond our unique programs, beyond our experts and equipment, and you will see something much more profound about our department. You will see we are the county's insurance plan. A plan that protects the residents of this county every day as well as in times of disaster for when disaster strikes as it did during the tornado and hurricanes we witnessed in the last few years. It was the employees of DES, the maintenance mechanic, the application specialist, the word processors, the training technicians, and the program specialists that set aside their nine-to-five duties and respond to the county's aid. These employees respond to the Emergency Operations Center as section chiefs and incident managers. These employees comprise the strike teams that distribute cots, food, water, and generators throughout the county. It is these employees, the ones with seemingly clerical titles that worked around the clock for 10 days straight during hurricanes. for 10 days straight during Hurricane Sandy to keep the county safe. It is these employees that have continued to work to rebuild and restore the county long after the emergency was over. And just as importantly, it is these employees that the Budget Committee voted unanimously to restore. I applaud the members of this committee because they have chosen to listen to the residents and not the rhetoric. By voting to restore the DES positions to the 2013 budget, they have reaffirmed their commitment to the safety of the county’s residents and first responders. I urge all legislators to remain diligent guardians of the county’s public safety net. I plead with you to follow the lead of the Budget Committee and take the necessary actions to ensure that all of the DES employees are restored in the 2013 adopted budget. When it comes to disasters in Westchester County, it has never been a question of if it will happen or even when will it happen. The question was, what do we do when it happens? The answer has always been the Department of Emergency Services. Hurricanes Irene and Sandy left us asking, what do we do when this keeps happening? Don’t let the next disaster leave us asking, why did we allow DES to be cut? Thank you.
Thank you. Joy Rosenzweig? While Joy’s coming up, could we have Jaclyn Breskin, Reverend Charles Lowe, Rose Noonan, Claudia Barbieri, and Vincent Altamari?
Good evening. I’m Joy Rosenzweig, Associate Director of the Women’s Enterprise Development Center. I want to thank the Board of Legislators for adding funding to the budget to support the Westchester Women’s Agenda Issues and WETSI’s small business training programs. As you know, our programs and services help women start and grow businesses. These businesses enable women entrepreneurs to support their families and contribute to the economic life of our community. In these challenging economic times, our services are needed now more than ever. We have many success stories about women entrepreneurs that have recently been helped by our center, and I can email them to you if you’d like. Here with me today is Artith Johnson, owner of PC Pal’s Computer Learning Center in Yonkers, who will be here sharing her story with you today. Artith is a 1999 graduate who teaches some of our entrepreneurial training programs.
Good evening, Board of Legislators. Good evening, everyone. I thank you for the funding that you have given to WETSI in the past and that you’re currently giving them now. I have been a recipient of the program, and it has also assisted me in getting skills that would allow me to take my business to the next level. And from what I’ve been hearing here today, you do need small businesses in Westchester County that will generate income and employ others that will also allow you to have monies to take care of whatever is needed. So we do thank you for the opportunity, because what it does, it gives us the chance to meet in groups as future business people, to discuss what problems that there are and how we can solve it. And it also gives us the environment where we meet with bankers, we get to meet with other people who have been where we have been. We’ve met with SCOR, with the SBA, that will give us the necessary skills that we can go out and help ourselves but also empower our communities. I do have contracts in other entities where I currently right now teach in the Mount Vernon Library. And the people that I teach are people who would not have access to computer skills, but they’re there every Tuesday night. They will come. The lady that was there just last night was 78-years-old, and she wanted to learn how to use a computer. So whatever we do here as small businesses does impact the community. And so I implore you that you look again at what is going on with the communities, and we are here to help, and we understand that you have a hard job on your hands, but we thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jaclyn Breskin?
I live in Eastchester and vote there, and I’m a frequent user of the county nature centers, especially Lenoir and Marshlands. And I know what a good job the curators there, Scott and Daniela, are doing, particularly with making the nature centers places where kids want to go and can afford to go to. This is not the first time I’ve spoken to you, and I really appreciate the time and attention you take and devote to this task. I know it isn’t easy. I’ve also attended programs and hike in most of the nature centers. Recent weather events should have underscored the importance of environmental education. Unfortunately, the proposed budget does not suggest that they have. A couple of rotating curators cannot be expected to keep our house in order or our children well-educated. Let me cite one example. There’s a sign at the entrance to Kitchiwong that the dogs must be leashed and that there are bags available for dog waste. I guess a lot of visitors can’t read. Yuck is all I have to say. And it is sure hard to have a nice peaceful outdoor walk in a dog-walk park. And I also know how much litter I have found at Marshlands after just one curator day off, and it goes on at Cranberry if you go on a day off, when I have encountered barbecues in Beer Fest over the years. So clearly, rotating curators are really not going to save us money. In the long run, I fear they’re going to cost us money. To me, it’s not thrifty to mortgage our future by not taking care of what we have. To me, it’s like those foolish businesses who are so busy looking at their immediate bottom line that they end up mortgaging their future. That’s not true fiscal conservatism. It reminds me of Thomas Jefferson, who believed in pay-as-you-go. True, he didn’t practice it with respect to his wine bill, but he did so with respect to repairs of his home. He never wanted to make a repair unless he had the cash on hand. By the time he had the cash, the cost of the original repair had gone up, and the damage was much more extensive and expensive. It would have cost less to take a loan out at a cheaper rate and pay for it in the first place. Our pay-as-you-go third president was penny-wise and pound-foolish, barely escaping bankruptcy. Someone else had to preserve Monticello for the future, who was pretty much in ruins at his death.
Thank you very much. Reverend Charles Lowe?
I am Reverend Charles Lowe, the pastor of First Presbyterian Church in Yorktown, and I am here tonight to represent a group of clergy who met with County Executive Astorino last week. Our group represented religious congregations from all over the county and included Roman Catholics, Episcopalians, Methodists, African-American Episcopalians, Baptists, Presbyterians, non-denominational Christians, people of the Jewish faith, Buddhists, and members of the Ethical Cultural Society. We want to say thank you to the county legislators for adding $8 million to the budget for low-income childcare and another $100,000 for the Title 20 subsidy. We appreciate this addition to next year’s budget as we know that times are tough. But this number still represents a substantial decrease or reduction in the childcare subsidy program over the past three years. Westchester has a long tradition of using the childcare subsidy program to help large numbers of low-income working families move up the economic ladder to self-sufficiency and to prepare their children to succeed in school. We hope that the current budget does not represent a new normal. We urge the legislators and county executives in future years to restore the childcare subsidy program to past levels of service. All of the research -- I wish my church clapped like that. All of the research shows how cost-effective it is to provide high-quality preschool to low-income children. If we truly -- if we’re truly interested in saving taxpayers’ money in the long term, we will invest in low-income children now while they are young. I truly believe that all budgets are moral documents, and it is my belief that we need to put the morality of children first and economics second. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rose Noonan?
I’m Rose Noonan, the Executive Director of the Housing Action Council. I’m here tonight to speak on behalf of the Westchester Women’s Agenda. As many of you know, Westchester Women’s Agenda is an association of organizations and individuals that are addressing women’s issues, particularly issues that affect low-income women. We are concerned particularly with economic empowerment issues that you heard about from Joy just a few minutes ago, housing and homelessness, which is my area of expertise, victims of domestic violence and sexual assault, health and mental health, childcare and other children’s services, civil legal services, and immigration services. Together, I emphasize the word “together,” these essential services provide the support necessary for women to maintain themselves and to achieve self-sufficiency. We know that you recognize this, and we thank you for the actions that you have taken to restore funding for those services that were not included in the proposed budget. As you deliberate over the next few days and more weeks, we ask you to be mindful of the Westchester Women’s Agenda and that we trust you to do what is necessary to maintain these essential services. We hope that at our 2013 Women’s Summit, we will be able to once again say the county cares. The county cares about providing all these services for women that are so important and that you have provided funding for in the past. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rose. Claudia Barbieri?
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be here in this meeting. I’m going to be fast because I’m not feeling good, but I wanted to be here. My name is Claudia Barbieri, and I’m the Program Coordinator at the JCY Westchester Community Partners. JCY Westchester Community Partners engage volunteers in the education of the children here in Westchester County. We mentor children in reading and homework help in the public schools, in the hospitals and libraries. Through our Smart Program, reading bodies after-school programs, family reading bodies, and many more programs, we’re serving 7,000 older adults, families, and children in Westchester County. In our Smart Program alone, we serve 500 children from grades pre-K to 10th grade every week. We also have the data, the support, that we have a positive impact in the education of the students. We are serving for 17 years the older adults. JCY Westchester Community Partners is a leader in intergenerational literacy volunteer programs. We know that every day, the mentors that volunteer their time, they work with the children in the poorest school in Westchester, and they help them in the school, they help them to be successful. If the kids are not -- if they don’t get help, the kids will drop out of the school and they will probably be part of gangs. I can be here for days and never finish sharing with you all the wonderful things I see and the stories that I hear. Some of our volunteers have felt useless at this time in their life, their own children have busy lives, but our Smart Program, they feel important. They can see into the hearts of the children and know that they’re needed. The children feel special as they soon realize that this adult comes to see them every week, learning a new word, sharing a new book, or asking questions become important time for both, for the children and the mentor. Please do not cut funding to intergenerational literacy programs in Westchester County. We help the seniors, we help the kids, we help the education, and thank you for supporting us and helping us with the education here. Thanks.
Thank you. Could we have Roger Shiber, Andrew Zimmerman, Dennis Hanretti, Bernice Tobias, and Cora Greenberg come forward?
Good evening, and thank you, Board of Legislators, for having us tonight and allowing me to speak. I especially want to thank all of you that have made it so far without taking a bathroom break. I am amazed at your abilities. I represent myself as a concerned taxpayer. I also represent an organization that you heard of from before, Best for New York, which stands for Better Education, Smart Taxation for New York. Obviously, our main concern is schools, because that’s where most of our budget goes to. Tonight, we have heard from many employees of the county, we have heard from contract agencies, we have heard from not-for-profits. While I am somewhat skeptical, I believe that almost all of them are doing a fantastic job, and in many cases, they are doing jobs way beyond what they are being compensated for to do. And I think it’s important that we support them and important that we support the important programs that they provide for the county. I’m especially shocked or had an eye awakening in regards to all the contract agencies doing healthcare work in our county. I didn’t realize that. And I realized, you know, that that’s so important, that we are able to provide healthcare for all in our county. We do, however, live in the most highly taxed county in the country. Therefore, we have a conundrum. We are paying a lot of taxes. Why? Why do we need to pay so many taxes? Other places are able to do it for less. I don’t know much about county finances. I do know a little bit about the schools. I know that Westchester, when you take a socio-economic comparison of other school districts throughout the country, we are the highest cost of educating our children, but we come in number 27th in whatever measures there are to provide for how well we are doing in that system. Something is wrong. There’s plenty of blame to go around. There’s blame amongst all of us. There’s blame for letting things grow the way they have. Things need to be changed. I think the most fruit for getting things changed is mandate relief from our state. And I know that many of you have already worked and have gone after our state legislators to make that happen, and I thank you for that. That is important because it is really affecting us. I represent tens of thousands of households in Westchester County that have financial issues with the taxes that we pay, that are kind of hanging on by a thread, and it’s just unfair. That we need to do something, we need to balance this out. In regards to the mandate reliefs, I have just mentioned two, to be specific, and one of them is the Tri-Borough Amendment, and the other is pension reform. I think if we could conquer these two particular issues, that there will be a lot of relief to be done, and we can get on to more fair footing in getting our budget house in order for long term. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Roger. Andrew Zimmerman?
I’d like to say a few words about the nature preserves, specifically Lenoir. Yonkers is a big city without very much open space compared to the rest of the county and very little nature education, especially now that the Buzak Center seems to be in jeopardy. It provides crucial summer camp experiences to people who couldn’t otherwise -- wouldn’t otherwise be exposed to them. Science is something that kids only can learn from books or from computers, and heaven knows, they’ll spend enough time in front of a computer screen. What they need to do is get out there in nature, and there’s no substitute to being in the natural world, picking up a rock and seeing a salamander wriggle out from underneath to really bring science home to kids. Now, as long as we own these parks, and we’re not going to just sell them off to the highest bidder, we’ve got to take care of them. Lenoir is on the grounds of an old estate. The estate next door, the former Elizabeth Seaton College, fell into the hands of the City of Yonkers, which failed to take care of it. Squatters moved in and stole everything that they could. This happened a few years ago. Please don’t let that happen to Lenoir. That shows for you the kind of thing that can happen if we don’t take care of our assets, and as important as the physical ones are the human assets. The curators we have are superb naturalists and educators. They give much more than what’s in their job description. It would be a crime to let these exemplary public servants go. I’m a homeowner, and believe me, I’m hurt by high taxes, but please, let’s not destroy the village in order to save it, wasting our precious assets of which we are the stewards. The approach taken by the County Executive reminds me of the barbarians who gleefully plundered ancient Rome, leaving civilization in ruins. He is out of step with Westchester, and I implore the legislators to think twice before you follow his lead in trashing our nature preserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Hanretti?
Committee Chair Myers, Board Chair Jenkins, and Vice-
Hi, Committee Chair Myers, Board Chair Jenkins, and Vice Chair and my county legislator, Lyndon Williams, and the rest of the board. Thank you for having us tonight, and thank you for your support of our organization in the past. I did testify at the Marineric hearing, and I gave people some information about the organization, what we do. Mount Vernon United Tenants being the only funded in the staff, Tenant Association Westchester. We get calls for assistance throughout the county, and I talked a little bit about what the whole crisis of housing insecurity, how it's so debilitating for people, how it really kind of crushes their life when they are facing eviction. I just want to talk tonight just about one extraordinary case that came from New Rochelle. I got a call last week, a woman, surprisingly, was $10,000 in arrears. She lived in a new building, the West Hab Building, and her rent was pretty significant, it was $1,600. And she had a decent job, but the only thing is she had a loan out that -- I saw her paychecks. She was getting $200 on a loan every week and $136 garnishment. So she was getting $336 removed every week from her paycheck. That ended up to be about $1,480, almost what her rent was. So that's why she had fallen so far behind. Fortunately, both of the loan and the garnishment came off about a month and a half ago. So we worked with her. I worked all weekend drafting a proposal, and I was up at 5:00 Monday morning. I submitted an initial proposal to West Hab on Friday. I get another one to them on Monday. Unfortunately, they still locked her out this week. We were able to help her get $4,300, which she had. She has money orders for $4,300. I'm now, I've processed applications for her for $3,200 from the Westchester College, the Hungry and Homeless, and $1,200 from the Bridge Fund. Both of those have given me verbal commitments. When we get that in writing, they're going to let her back in this Friday. That's a win-win-win. She and her pregnant daughter are going to have a home, they're not going to have to go into the shelter. West Hab, which, as people know, and they could have had a judgment against it, and they could have collected it later on, but it probably would have taken about 10 years to get that money back. Now they're going to get it next week, and clearly, the taxpayers are going to win. That family, that, there will be two separate housing units, they would have to be in a shelter, her, and then her pregnant daughter, and that baby, when that baby comes. So the county's going to save $8,000 a year on that case, okay? That's the kind of extraordinary cases that we do kind of on a regular basis. I mean, this was pretty out of the ordinary, $10,000, but we do this stuff on a regular basis, and it's not the kind of stuff you hear about all the time. But like I say, the people win, the organizations win, and the county taxpayers win. So I'm asking you to support the organization. A couple of our members are going to be speaking after me, talk about some individual cases, but I want to thank you for your past support, and I hope you'll continue it and enhance it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
And have a happy holidays.
Thank you, Dennis. Bernice Tobias?
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Bernice Tobias. I'm a union carpenter for 25 years. I'm out of work now, I've been out of work a lot, and I want to tell you a little bit what United Tenant has done for me. I went to DSS under the circumstances that I had been out of work, like other members, over 3,000 carpenters like myself out of work. You'll never think it could ever happen to you. You see it on the news, you hear the stories, and I'm one of the person that said that. It could never get that far. Trust me, it could get that far. I went to DSS, I've worked all my life just for help with the reals, my rent. I don't want nothing else, just a little help. I was turned down each and every time. When you go there, they make you feel so degraded. You're already down, they push you further. You don't want to go there anymore. They talk to you so horrible. So a friend of mine told me about United Tenant, and I didn't even want to go there, because I don't want nothing from nobody, always worked all my life. So I did go. She said, "Go." She pushed me to go. She said, "Go, because you're going to be evicted." And I was going to be evicted. I had nowhere else to go. And I did go, and I met Mr. Hanrady, and he said, "Don't worry, we'll help you." But I was still afraid, because I'm about to be evicted, I got served already. He said, "Don't worry." I called him 24/7, and he assured me, "It's going to be okay." I had to go to court, he helped me with the papers and everything. He told me, "Well, I've never been to court for this before, so I'm afraid." He's like, "Don't be afraid, it's going to be okay." So I went over to the court, I came back, I thought I was going to pass out. He said, "Okay, Bernice, it's okay, you're going to be all right." So he assured me, I was still calling him, I would call the office, even when the office was closed, and leave message, and he somehow got the message and would call me 11 and 12:00. He was like, "Bernice, go to bed, it's going to be okay." I'm like, "But Dennis, I can't sleep." But to make a long story short, he saved my life. When I said "saved my life," really saved my life, because, like I said again, you look at people and you say, "How could it get that far?" You know, I would never go that far. Yes, you would. I was thinking about it. So he saved my life, and like I said, I tried to figure out, what could I do to give back things? What could I do to return? So I volunteer, I work there now. I volunteer my time to work there, so each and every day, I see the people come in, just like I did that day, come in just like myself, scared, and I hear the stories. And I heard one lady say, one day, she said, "Boy, what would we do if Dennis left, if the United Tenant wasn't here anymore? What would the community do?" So, you know, it means so much to us, like people like myself, there's a lot of us out there. And I thought it was only me, but now that I'm in the office every day, if you could see the amount of people coming, I was like, "Oh, well, it wasn't only me," you know? I'm like, "Oh, my God." And I hear the stories, and I go like, "I thought my story was bad. Mine's nowhere near." I just want to thank you guys for so much, for helping us so much, and I wish you a blessed and happy holiday, and continue to help us, because, trust me, the community need us, need you guys, we need more than ever. You can't even imagine the help that we really need out there. Just want to thank you.
Thank you. Cora Greenberg?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cora Greenberg. I'm the Executive Director of the Westchester Children's Association, which is an independent child advocacy organization, which has been around for almost 100 years. We don't receive any county money, and so when I speak about what is needed, it's not for us. I'm really sorry that our friends from Rybrook, who were talking about mandates and how we have to stay within our budget, left, because I think there's a kind of disconnect. All of the people who spoke tonight, who were speaking about the needs that they see, whether it's healthcare, childcare, youth services, any number of things, understand that there is limited dollars. There's nobody here that doesn't understand that. I think the question is, what are the priorities for those dollars? And that's the conversation that is never had. It's had in the hallways, we go and we, you know, we talk with you, we have it sitting out here, but as a community, as a county, we are really lacking that conversation. And unless you have that conversation, as the minister from Yorktown said, "This is a moral document, it's a document that expresses values." And if the only value is saving the taxpayer dollar, well, then you know what to do. But there are other values, and I know that you all have other values, we all do. So the question is, what values will be expressed in the final budget? You've added a lot of things back in, not everything is going to stay in probably the way it is. But as you go through the next few days and make those hard decisions, think about what are the values you want to express, because that is what you're telling us, is how you are as a leader and as a government official, and that's how we know who you are. So we expect a lot from you, and it's very difficult, but I hope that you will think about that, and as I also said to that gentleman who left, you know, every year, most of the taxpayers in Westchester, except for those in Yonkers, get to vote on their school budget. And every year, almost all the school budgets pass, and everybody is voting themselves higher taxes. Why? Because they value what those taxes are giving them. If we don't have a conversation about what are taxes, our county taxes, even though they're a small part of our tax bill, what are those taxes giving us? Why would anybody want to pay them? Those taxes are giving us all the services that you heard about, and then some, all the workers in the county having a job, all the childcare slots being subsidized, that are subsidized. That's a lot that we pay for with our county taxes. We value them, we know that you value them, so please take that into consideration as you go through the next days. We appreciate all the additions that you have made back in the budget, we know you have a lot of hard work to do, and we are wishing you the best of luck with that, and hope that you will keep children and youth, that's my deal, at the top, because that is the best investment we can make in our future, beyond the election cycle, as Michael Smith always says, "Beyond the election cycle." Where do we want to be? Thanks so much.
Thank you, Cora. Could we have James Cliff, David Locklear, David Johnson, Linda Johnson, and Patrick Hogan?
Good evening. My name is James Cliff, and I'm here to speak in behalf of United Tenants. A couple of years ago, I lost my job, was out of work, you know, struggling, got into odd jobs now and then. After about a year then, couldn't pay the bills, ended up getting an eviction notice. Like Bernice before me, went to DSS, spent hours in the lines, filled out numerous applications, only to be told, "We can't help you." I heard about Dennis Hanrady at United Tenants, and went up, spoke to him, and I was able to get some help from him. If I didn't get no help from him, what would have happened? I would end up in a shelter, lost all my property and everything, and would have cost the taxpayers more. Quality of life would have went way down. Today, I'm working part-time again, starting to go up again, doing better, and I've been able to take care of my bills and everything. So I hope you don't cut any funding, and have a nice holiday.
Thank you very much. David Locklear?
Good evening. Thank you for listening to me, and all of you have a great holiday season. Lyndon, good to see you. I'm not the sharpest pencil in the box, but when I think of the fact that the Department of Social Services only allows $271 for a single individual for rent, and the shelter system receives somewhere in the vicinity of $4,300 per month for any one single individual, there's clearly something wrong with this math. I give my greatest thanks to Dennis Hanrady for the help that he's given me twice in the last 20 years. I'm more than happy to do any and everything I can to, with volunteer time. You guys, as I said, I'm not the sharpest pencil in the box, but when you think of the needs of the poor, it is the working man whose taxes pay for the basic needs of the people. When you consider that, so many of us are down at a time when we want to, when we're trying to hold our backs straight and keep our heads up, we don't need the powers that be to squash us in the middle of our spine while we're down. So, in conclusion, do the best you can to get the funds that we need where we need them. The rich are getting richer, and too many poor people are getting poorer without work, without the needs. Have a great holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, David. David Johnson?
County legislators, my name is David Johnson. We've been living here in Rybrook since the year 2000, and I've taught for 40 years in Connecticut. And when I came here, after I retired, I was kind of at a loss for what to do, and thank God, I discovered the many parks that we have here in Westchester, particularly the Marshlands and the Reed Center and Cranberry Lake. And I've also met the curators of these places, and you almost feel blessed when you meet them, and especially when you watch them with the children of Westchester. To me, they're like wizards, because they perform magic with these kids. Some of these kids have never been in the woods, they have no idea what some of these animals that live in the woods are, the owls, the deer, so much more, and their eyes are opened, and they open up a window to the magic of wildlife in Westchester. And to eliminate some of these positions, to me, would be a tragedy. It would be a tragedy for our youth as they go through the whole process of learning what nature is and how valuable it is to their education. I think it was George Bush who established the educational mandate, "No Child Left Behind." Well, soon after that, there was an individual who wrote a great book, I thought, "No Child Left Inside." One of the things that I do as a volunteer, I'm a volunteer teacher naturalist, and there are times when we're with the kids and we're bringing them back up a hill or something like that, for example, the hill at Marshlands, and before we get up, I tell them, you know, "I think it'll be interesting to see how many of you, at the end of the trail, are huffing and puffing, because you spend way too much time indoors, watching TV and playing with your computers." So I really urge you to make sure that we have our curators intact at the end of this budget. I think they play an extremely important role, and I know their salaries are not the greatest in the world, but they don't do it for the money. They do it for the love, for the love of the children, and for the love of nature. This is a valuable, valuable asset in Westchester County, and I certainly hope we can preserve that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Linda Johnson?
Good evening, legislators and members of Westchester County residents. As a teacher of 40 years, I can tell you that children learn best when they're participating and using one or all of their five senses. And Westchester's Parks and Recreation Department provides an excellent model for what my husband just said, as "No Child Left Inside." He's so passionate about it. When he comes home from working with kids, whether they're four years old to 14 years old, the things that he does with them, their eyes wide open, it's almost magical as he speaks. He forgot to tell you that he was a marine biologist teacher in Connecticut, and going from high school and college teaching to four-year-old teaching was, he said, "I wish I did this my whole life." I mean, he loves teaching, but those four-year-olds and seven-year-olds, when they see a butterfly, or they see a moa, or they see some kind of a reptile or a fish, it's amazing. So I conclude, and I'm here to support the curators and the naturalists of Westchester County, and I can tell you from my 40 years of teaching, my last 10 was in English language arts teacher, all the fifth graders in my district. Math and ELA are on the front burner, science and social studies are on the back burner, and we need to turn that around. And our naturalists are doing such a wonderful, wonderful thing for our young children, especially in science. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Hogan, and as Patrick is coming forward, could we please have Joy Reidenberg, Anne Jaffe Holmes, Mark Cantasani, Pastor Odunga Lawrence Maddox, and Megan Atchison, please. Patrick?
Hello. My name is Patrick Hogan, and along with my wife, Dolores, we're group family licensed childcare providers in New Rochelle. We've been doing childcare for 27 years, and yesterday, we read in the papers that you restored the funds for childcare, and on behalf of the providers and the parents of Westchester, we definitely thank you for that. We know that it's not the end of the process, there's a long way to go, but we want to let you know that we're here fighting, we're going to stand behind you, we're going to be out here every time we need to be out here, because it is important. I know you've heard everything earlier, you've been sitting here for hours, and we appreciate that, and we've been sitting here for hours, because we know that is important. What you don't hear a lot of times, and what the county exec might not hear, and we know he has a job to do also, is the little ones reciting the ABCs, doing a pledge of allegiance, playing with each other, all different nationalities, all different colors, mingling with each other and everything, learning from each other. The parents, you don't hear the sigh of relief that they have when they go to work, knowing that their children are in quality daycare, that they don't have to worry about that. Granted, if it does go up, if the parentage does go up, you will have parents that are going to drop out, but you're also going to have parents that are going to keep their kids in daycare, because they need that. You heard Arlene talk about $71 left over. They will drown. They will drown, but parents, because they want quality care for their children, are going to find some way. And a lot of times, it's going to fall on a provider, because we invest ourselves with these kids, with the children. We're not only providers, we become their doctors, we become the family lawyer, we become the family advisor, we become the parents' parents, okay? We become their counselors. So they're going to come to us, they're going to look at us and say, "What am I going to do?" They've been yanked around like yoyos, the percent goes up, the percent goes down, "Let us come back out, let us go back down." They come to us all times of day, all times of night, "What are we going to do? What's going to happen?" And we try to tell them it's going to be okay, because they know we're going to try to help them. Parents are already late with their parentship as it is now, but we take them in, because again, it's for the love of the kids. It's like teachers, we don't do it because of the money, okay? It's because we love the kids, and we know they're going to need that help. So we definitely thank you, and we understand, again, as I said, that the budget process is not over, but we encourage you to keep the monies in there, do whatever you have to do to keep it in there, because the children need it, the children want it, and it's providing for our future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick. Joy Ridenberg.
I'm Dr. Joy Ridenberg. I'm the president of the Friends of Reed Wildlife Sanctuary, and I speak on behalf of more than 1,000 people who have signed these cards, and I'd like to hand them over to you as the hour is late, and I thank you for voting unanimously for restoring the jobs to our nature curators. And we do know that perhaps there will be a veto of this budget, and it may need to be overturned, and so we hope we can count on your support, and we want to just show you how many people are standing behind me on this.
Thank you, Joy. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm Jerry Ostroff. I volunteer at the Reed Wildlife Center, and I've been doing it for about three years, many hours a week. I travel from Yonkers to get there, Ken knows where I live. I know a number of you from the political world, and tonight, I would like to ask you, when you're reviewing these budget cuts and the vetoes, and I know you've done a good job restoring things for us, that you take it out of the political realm. Parks should not be politicized. This is not a Democratic or a Republican event when you go to a public park, and when the families go. And I resent, and am very discouraged by what I heard the commissioner of parks saying about the nature, the replacement plan they have for our naturalists, who are incredible people and work very hard physically, keeping those trails safe and the fields open. It isn't even just the education, they put in a lot of incredible physical work, and that's not going to be duplicated by this rotating nonsense that they're talking about, and certainly the education will be lost. What I do know, in this time of limited money, that a couple of months ago, when I was driving to the Ryde Reed Center, I passed Saxon, that park.
Saxon Woods.
And there was a new sign up, you know, underneath the sign, and it was Robert P. Astorino, county executive, you know, a nice wood sign, you know? When I got to Playland, there was the same sign, you know, under the Playland sign, and when I came to the entrance to Reed, there was the same sign, you know? So I think all over the county, how much money was spent putting his name up, you know? And it will only take a couple of letters, I think, when someone gets disgruntled, to make that disasterino. So please do not allow this to become a publicized political event, this budget, and go on the basis of what you know to be the truth, and please restore and overturn any vetoes that might be coming your way about the curators. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne Jaffe Holmes.
Good evening, legislators, and thank you so much for taking the time to listen to us. I was here last year at the very tail end of every single one of those hearings you did last year, and you're doing it again. This is good government. I am grateful to have a board of legislators like all of you, and I just want to say, you saved the crazy person for the last. I'd like to draw your attention to the poster up above, behind all of us, and raining down on this room today, the trees. We haven't talked about it yet, but in addition to an economic crisis, and social crises, and health crises for humans, we're facing climate crisis, environmental crisis that actually is very serious. The trees of Westchester County parks are critical for the health and well-being of every child, woman, and man in Westchester County. As important as the health clinics are the trees. That's not to say it's a choice between the health clinics and the trees. It's not a choice between them. We need both. The trees, though, have been very wisely protected by Westchester County in several ways. One is the establishment of the Deer Task Force, which, the board of legislators, I give you so much credit. And it's been very effective, it's done a very effective job on a small scale. If anything, the Deer Task Force needs more investment. The parks, without the parks, people would not be, people are learning to understand their trees, and learning to live and work with the environment in a way that is protecting the environment. If we don't have curators in the parks, they become empty shells that will be ignored. Those lands need to be utilized more, not less. And there's this idea that maybe private nature centers can take over the function of the county parks. They can't. I tell you that with real knowledge of the field of environmental education. You cannot have environmental educators from private nature centers over here, taking care of the county parks and utilizing the lands of the county parks to help people understand the environment over there. It can't, it doesn't work like that. The third thing is Cornell Cooperative Extension, teaching people how to live on the land and live with the land, and utilize the resources of the land in a healthy way. Ever since I got involved with the Leaf, Love 'Em and Leave 'Em Leaf Mulching project with the support of the board of legislators, thank you very much, that project is about bringing down the cost of the county hauling organics out to locations hundreds of miles away. That project has taught me that Cornell Cooperative Extension is critical to the small businesses of Westchester. It stimulates the businesses, it provides them with information critical to their functioning. It's a bargain, it's a total bargain. County government is a bargain, and it's a bogus thing that we need to cut any of these things that have been talked about tonight. That's bogus. Zero percent tax increases, not as important as the good leadership of government, which is what is being provided by you, and I hope someday by the county executive. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Cantasani, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thanks for hearing my case tonight. I'm here in support of the deer, Westchester County Deer Management and Reforestation Program. And like I've said and you've heard before, our ecosystem is completely being decimated by the overpopulation of deer. I myself have witnessed a complete decline in the biodiversity over my life. I'm here tonight to tell you how important it is, and how well it's working. I mean, of course, it's important for our recreation, but don't forget, we're producing air and clean water from our open space and our woods, woods that keep getting ruined as we speak. I mean, picture this, the woods now look like a ransacked buffet dinner. Everything is ruined from the shoulder or from about eye level down. Now, to show you how, to give you a few statistics on how well it's working, four years ago, before this program started, we have a survey, an official survey of 64 deer per square mile in Westchester, which is way too much, because our ecosystem can only manage seven to 10 per square mile. Now, through our program, I keep looking for Dan, because there is, through Dan Atchison's effort and our deer hunting program, we've reduced that number from 64 to 40 in four short years, all on volunteer time, with just one person organizing it and costing the county anything. Now, we not only bring all this volunteer time to help the parks, but we also created the Three Deer Archery Force, which brings money to the county. So our program is nothing but positive steps in every direction, and I really urge you to keep it in the budget, because for such a small amount of money, we're impacting the whole ecosystem and the children. They're getting more enjoyment out of it. And we've proven that it works also in the exclusion zones, which I mentioned before. There's so much lush vegetation growing, it's amazing. You should go look at it, it's only a couple minutes off 121 out in South Salem. So I urge you all to really consider keeping this program, because it's essential to our growth, both physically and spiritually in our county. And I wish you all a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Pastor Maddox.
First of all, let me thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. This is my third time addressing either the county exec and you. First meeting with the county executive was in Mount Vernon with about 30 pastors of various denominations, and we came to that meeting for a single purpose, to speak to the county exec about holding the line on childcare and not raising it from the 20% to the 35 that he proposed. Second time was to meet the county exec in his office, at his boardroom. Another 30 pastors, although you heard the former minister here, who stated the numbers are numbers there, I was among that group, priests, rabbis, pastors, again, speaking to the county exec, saying to him, "We must hold the line on childcare, not to raise it to his proposed 35%." You represent the parents of the Westchester District, the county. It is unconscionable that a parent would deny its child healthcare, unconscionable. Additionally, it is unconscionable that a parent would deny its child early education, particularly in the, under the system under which we live today, a changing technological age, to deny this child an opportunity to compete, and we know the statistics, if this child is given an opportunity to go to early daycare, they're more likely to finish school, do well in school, stay out of trouble, stay out of the criminal justice system, go on to college, do graduate work, become great scientists, teachers, legislators, maybe even seek the office of president, and oh yes, maybe become a pastor and challenge the causes of people in the communities which they live. I don't know how many of you have. If you have, I ask you to do it again. Take off your suits and your fine clothes, go to a healthcare center, spend the day there, and see the hopeless people coming for hope in these healthcare centers. And then go to a childcare center and see these youngsters coming with excitement on their face, wanting to learn, excited about learning. We must not deny them that right. The pastor said earlier, "It's our moral obligation." It's our obligation as parents of this Westchester County to take care of the least of these. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you very much. Megan Atchison, and as Megan is coming forward, could we have Margarita Hidalgo, Dunston Abraham, Anna Victoria Perez, Joseph Hilario, and Maria Polanco, please.
Hi, my name is Megan Atchison, and I'm here tonight to speak in support of the curator of wildlife and the three nature center curators. I myself was a full-time, hourly naturalist with the Parks Department for five years, working at five of the six county nature centers for some period of time. I left my job with the Parks Department last year, when I moved upstate to Rensselaer County, but have kept up with what has been going on in the parks through my family and former coworkers. You may think that I am biased because of my past county affiliation, but I believe that my perspective is valid and important, because I have seen firsthand just how valuable these jobs are, and how crucial it is that the people who currently hold these positions be preserved as county curators. You have already heard from other speakers at the past hearings and tonight about the abundance of deer and their negative impacts on the forest, and about the importance of the curator's roles as mentors and educators in our parks. So why am I here? I drove two and a half hours to speak to you, because I am concerned that someone may be under the false impression that cutting these jobs will not matter, but it will. The job of the curator of wildlife is more than just running the deer management program from an office during regular workday hours. No one else in the Parks Department is as qualified, nor would be as dedicated to serve this job as Dan Atchison. Ask any of the nearly 100 hunters in the program, and they will tell you that Dan is on call 24 hours a day, and even on his days off, he will come out to assist a hunter in the woods, whether it be 4:00 in the morning or 10:00 PM at night. The other nine months out of the hunting season, outside of the hunting season, are still spent in the field with all of the other countywide wildlife issues, including goose, beaver, coyote, and forestry management. It makes no sense to try to replace Dan's expertise with inexperience. Likewise, running a nature center is more than just keeping the visitor's center open and maintaining the grounds. The curators are all well-educated environmental scientists who continually perform crucial biodiversity studies and teach the public about the importance of the county's many ecosystems. Again, it makes no sense to replace expertise with inexperience, as the Parks Commissioner has suggested doing. These four positions, and more importantly, the four people that currently hold them, need to be preserved. I'd like to thank the Budget Committee for voting earlier this week to reinstate all of the county jobs put on the chopping block by Mr. Astorino, and urge the remainder of the board to do the same. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Margarita Hidalgo, Dunston Abraham, Anna Victoria Perez, Joseph Hilario, Maria Polanco, Carol Griffiths. Is Carol still here? Yes. Could Jim Russell come up to speak after Carol? Jim Russell, Freddie Polanco, Mark Solomon, Angela Underwood, and Jerry Ostroff, please.
I'd like to also thank you for being so patient, for listening, for showing good government. I'm here representing Federated Conservationists of Westchester County. We have members throughout Westchester, our member organizations are in every single district of Westchester County. We have long supported the Department of Parks Recreation and Conservation, and Westchester County as a whole. We've been involved in the Global Warming Action Plan, we were strong supporters of mass transit on the Tappan Zee Bridge, we partnered with the county on such programs as Conservation, Conversations on Conservation, it's a little hard to say, and we were involved in the Deer Management Task Force. That resulting problem, program is a great example of a regional approach to a problem and an issue, and we've been a leader in that. The loss of this program, or its sole implementer, would be extremely detrimental to regional forest conservation efforts. Also, the 2013 budget cuts directly imply philosophical choices by the county executive. There is a 24% reduction to the Conservation Division of the Parks Department, well ahead of the other cuts to the other silos in the Parks Department. This is a clear affront to the conservation and environmental efforts in the county. The Conservation Division is a leader, and our members and member organizations have strong ties to related staff and programs. Three of our member organizations are directly impacted by Conservation Division layoffs. The curators there are not only the face of the nature centers in which they operate, but they're responsible for the maintenance of the parks. They've been directly involved with natural resource management plans and conservation efforts throughout the county. They have the training that's necessary and the job discretion to allow them to run the diverse and affordable environmental programs and summer camps that are enjoyed by the citizens of Westchester. Operating with unqualified people or with a reduced staff would reduce the numbers of programs and would be detrimental to regional environmental education efforts. Our parks are so important, as Westchester becomes more urbanized, the open- As Westchester becomes more urbanized, the open space in the parks become more and more and more valuable, and they must be taken care of. And in a time when personal connection with nature and natural resources are most needed, we implore you, we implore the Board of Legislators, to reinstate the curators and their crucial representation of Westchester County's obligation to future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Jim Russell?
Chairman Jenkins, members of the County Board of Legislators, fellow citizens of Westchester County. My name is Jim Russell, and I have studied the proposed budget and have found a county agency where I believe there could be significant savings. But I'm not going to tell you what that agency is yet. I'll give you a few hints first. That's eighty-two employees, a budget of seventeen million dollars, allocation of salaries for five point five million dollars. That means that works out to about sixty-seven thousand dollars a year income for each employee. Overtime has been allocated at nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars, which comes to about twelve thousand dollars per employee. Add those together, you almost get eighty thousand dollars per employee. In fact, I think that's even more than the members of the Board of Legislators make annually. But you can't take any civil service test for this particular agency. The jobs are only by appointment, political appointment. By now, you may have guessed that that agency is the County Board of Elections. The Board of Legislature will give the County Board of Elections a bucket of money, which the two commissioners will decide how it's divvied up amongst the political appointees. And, for example, we have ten full-time voting machine techs to manage the new machines that we got two years ago. Now, I wonder what they're going to do all year long when these machines aren't being used? And their salaries are around, go up to about seventy-nine thousand dollars each. Compared to, let's say, Rockland County, where the salaries are around fifty thousand dollars. In fact, the total budget for salaries in Rockland County is less than one million dollars. Now, of course, it's a smaller population, it's about a third, but if we multiply that times a six hundred thousand, three times more, it should come out to maybe about three million dollars for salaries here in Westchester County. What they did in Nassau County, where they have nine hundred thousand voters as opposed to six hundred thousand here, they have a budget also of the same amount, seventeen million dollars. They hired an accounting firm to see where they could save in the Board of Elections. They come up with three million dollars' worth of savings. And I would urge the members of the Board of Legislators to do the same thing here, to see if several million dollars could be saved and used to help stop some of the layoffs. In times like these, political patronage should take a second place to economic necessity. Thank you.
Thank you. Freddie Polanco, Mark Solomon.
Good evening. My name is Mark Solomon. I live in Bedford Hills. I'm a certified arborist. I do most of my work here in Westchester County, and I'm here in support of Cornell Cooperative Extension. For me to be a certified arborist, I have to get about forty credits every three years. Cornell Cooperative Extension runs the programs that somebody like me can go and get those credits. If it were not for them, I'd have to do things like go up to Rochester for three days at an expense of fifteen hundred dollars to myself, as well as the crew that I run would not be able to work those days. So, you know, since Hurricane Sandy here, tree guys have become kind of popular. It's important that, you know, I'm local when my guys are working. I mean, nobody here would want a crew at their house, you know, that I set up with me five hundred miles away, you know, nowhere in sight if something were to happen. So, you know, I would be spending a lot of money out of the county, you know, in order to do that. And, you know, I'd also like to say that virtually every other county has a cooperative extension. Somehow, everybody else can figure out how to afford it, you know, but here, it's always on the chopping block. And I'd also like to remind you guys, whoever of you voted for that fertilizer law a few years ago that required the class that we take, some of you remember that because I recognize you. Part of that was that Cornell Cooperative Extension was the one who administered the test. So, you know, now you set up a requirement for me to make a living. You know, we employ thousands of people. Now you want to take away the, you know, the group that you set up to educate and, you know, give out this certification. And I also want to say, you know, not raising taxes ever is not a practical way to go through life. I mean, if I were to say, you know, "I'm never going to pay more than four dollars for a gallon of gas, that's my limit." I mean, you know, for the last three or four weeks, I wouldn't have been able to go anywhere. You know, costs go up, you know, they have to be paid for. You know, I just don't think that that's a practical way to go. And, you know, there's more to value than just what something costs. You know, there's also what you're getting for it. And, you know, I'd also like to give you guys an idea of where to look for some more money. Again, I live up in northern Westchester. Where I live, it's littered. And when I say littered, I mean, like, you can't drive down Guard Hill Road without seeing all these new farms that are set up all over the place. There's big signs, "Vegetable Farm." You go up through North Salem, there's horse farms. All these places are getting agricultural, you know, tax rates. And it was never the intention for somebody to get a break on their taxes, to, you know, have a weekend horse farm. I think like forty percent of the land up there is agriculturally rated. So I would like you guys to take a look at that and, you know, see who's living up there and see where you're pulling the food out of people's mouths down here, and, you know, you really get a good sense of really who's riding who. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Angela Underwood. As Angela is coming forward, could we have Gita Morris, Adriana Oliveros, Alan Inman, Sonia Brown, and Sarah Brown, please? Thank you.
Good evening. I thank you for your time and your patience tonight, for it has been a long night. I'm here as a parent tonight with a voice of hope and expectation to be heard, and with a positive result that the parent shares don't go any higher than twenty percent. I have two daughters, one in college and one in daycare. And my little one Savannah, she started in Grayston Childcare in Yonkers at three months old. She's now nineteen months. And they have had a positive impact on her growth. She's very smart. The childcare subsidy has helped me so much, so much, more than I think anyone will ever know. My husband, he was in the towers of nine eleven, and after that, he lost his job after five years. And we lost fifty thousand dollars in income because he could not find a job as an engineer. He went to college for that. And because of that, now we have to live from paycheck to paycheck. But because of the childcare subsidy, we're making it by. I'm very thankful for that. Tonight, we all had different situations and circumstances, but one thing in common, a need. A need for the funding not to be cut and for the parent shares to stay at twenty percent. Because if it does change, then our lives will be drastically changed for the worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Gita Morris? She's still here? Adriana Oliveros? Alan Inman?
Good evening, legislators. Again, I'm Alan Inman. I live in Neuroshale on Wilmott Road, Scardsdale PO. I'm here this evening in support of the Cornell Cooperative Extension, and I'd like to present why I believe it would be a very substantial value proposition for the county to continue to support that cooperative extension with funding. First of all, the extension does incredible work related to the four-H and horticultural issues that obviously support community gardening, and some very major developmental issues that the residents of Neuroshale benefit from directly. It's one of the few sources in our county that our residents can access for education and development, and clearly at a time where economics is so impacting on nutritional sources in our country and certainly in this county. It is not a good gesture, nor is it a wise decision, to cut back on resources that support nutrition for residents of this county. Secondly, we've just been incredibly impacted by Hurricane Sandy and the devastation that has occurred throughout our county related to falling trees and erosion of river beds and the beach erosion and so forth. These are areas that also the cooperative extension totally support related to mediation and being able to recapture the trees and the gardening areas, the embankments, the river beds and so forth, that they have continually given information for that allows those areas to be not only supported, but to be saved. Third, and this is where my own personal experience comes in, evermore, we are facing a major, major challenge in the state that leads to a major challenge of invasive plants that are basically proliferating our river areas and streams and so forth. This is something that absolutely is now becoming invasive. The state is just, this past year, come out with a major law concerning invasive plants and Japanese knotweed, which is something that has incredible root systems that are now impacting residences as well. My home is being impacted. My property value is deteriorating because of this invasion. The cooperative extension is the premier source of mediation and remediation related to that issue. And I'm here to say to you that it is a major value proposition to keep them on that work and to keep that information flowing, because all of our residences throughout these areas in this, in the county will absolutely suffer the consequence without that resource. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sonia Brown? Sarah Brown? While Sarah's coming forward, or Sonia's coming forward, Walter Lipscomb, Carlos Hodgson, Rachel Estroff, Frances Greenberg, Michael Kaufman, I think he left. And that's it. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Midstream in year 2011 and 2012 programming, the Astorino administration terminated several youth and family programs, giving the heads of the program only a month's notice that the funding would disappear. We were told by the same administration, and I quote, "There was no funding for these programs in 2012," and that the county at that time would be facing an over ten million deficit in the Department of Social Service budget by January first, 2012. May I add, the only thing we faced was a bold-faced fib storytelling at its best by the Astorino administration. Not only was there not a deficit, but there was over five point eight million dollars left over at the end of the 2011 Department of Social Service budget, and at least over eight to five million dollars in unreserved fund balance. To add salt to wound, Westchester County received a hundred percent of this funding to support these programs from New York State, not one cent funded by Westchester County to run these programs. During the 2011-2012 year, I spoke to our state-elected officials. I was told by our state-elected officials that the funding had not decreased, but had increased in 2011-2012. Another lie told by our county executive and the Astorino administration. On Channel 12, Astorino made mention that we should not be going after local government or county government, but we should be fighting with the state because they had decreased the tan of funds. That was not true. I learned later that the Astorino administration's goal and objective was to transfer the over five point eight million dollars from the Department of Social Services to the Department of Corrections. The letter of termination we received in December 2012 stated that these programs, programs that offered academic, job readiness, emplacement, advocacy, safe childcare, mental health, healthcare, college prep, bilingual services for newcomers, and other services, and I quote once again from the Astorino administration, "We're no longer in the county's best interests," end of quote. Based on the information I previously stated, I can only believe that the best interest for the Astorino administration is to keep our people locked up, unemployed, homeless, uneducated, missed opportunities for quality child and healthcare, lack of support for our newcomers, with the ultimate tragedy ending in death. Because of those, because of, because those are some of the things that have increased since the termination of funds, since the termination of funds in 2011-2012, five participants from the Westchester Rise program are currently locked up in the county jail, costing taxpayers over five hundred thousand dollars. And I attended one funeral of our past participant. It only cost close to a hundred thousand to provide services to over one hundred youth and families providing support and preventive services. Yes, we carried on services without funding, but we offered a sliced program instead of a program in its totality as contracted. We continue because unlike the Astorino administration, we honored our contract and continued services to our youth, families, and community. Why? Because it was the right thing to do. Once again, here is my request. First, the agreements and contracts Westchester County signed with these program providers, as provided in the 2011 county budget, be honored right away. I've been following your budget, and I have noticed the transferring of funds. This is possible. Second, I am asking that you restore funds to support the 2013 Greenberg program. Help us help our families. Third, help convey to Astorino administration that it is less expensive to educate and provide support services than it is to incarcerate. Building a better community with support and preventive services is much stronger with a much better foundation than building and spending more jails. We are saving lives and saving taxpayers dollars. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Walter Lipscomb? No. Carlos Hodgson? Rachel Estroff? Frances Greenberg?
Hi, I'm here to ask you to keep funding for a full-time naturalist at Lenoir Nature Preserve. For a very small amount of money in a one point seven billion budget, you get services that touch the lives of thousands of people. As you can tell from my card, I am the treasurer of the Hudson River Audubon Society. We're based at Lenoir, and you get really a lot of free volunteer labor at Lenoir without having at least one person to constantly keep an eye on forty acres. You know, you do have problems with vandalism. If you don't have a nature center open, it's hard to bring children or elderly there because you need a place to warm up, drink, have them use the bathroom. So to make Lenoir accessible to the thousands of people who do use it, you really need a full-time naturalist there. a full-time naturalist there. And not only that, the Hudson River Audubon Society runs programs that really touch the lives of thousands of people. We run programs for Yonkers schoolchildren. All our programs are free. So there's very little amount of money in a really huge budget. You really get a lot, a lot of services. It's not life and death, I'm not pretending it is. It is quality of life, and it's a quality of life that touches everyone, you know, from the very, very poorest people to even the very rich people, because there are not that many people who can afford a gorgeous view of the Palisades, but you can just come to Lenoir, and there's the most beautiful view in the world that used to be enjoyed by a millionaire, one of the richest men in the New York State in the 19th century. And it's, it's ours, it's for everybody in Westchester. So a little bit of money goes a long way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience who I missed? No? Well, thank you very much, and I will turn this back over to the chairman.
Oh, Madam Clerk. Here's Madam Clerk. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Members, I'll take a motion from Legislative Williams. On the motion of Mr. Williams, the board is adjourned.